Welcome, everyone. I now call the March 4th, 2025 regular City Council meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, we'll take a roll. It'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name. City clerk?
Thank you. Councilmember Zorn?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember Kerr?
Here.
Councilmember Manki?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra. All present with the exception of Deputy Mayor Alcabra, who I believe will be joining after 6:30.
Correct. Before we continue with the rest of the agenda, I'd like to reiterate some guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently, and mute your microphone when not speaking. First up on our agenda is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to the meeting agenda? Seeing none, we're going to move on to item two, which is a staff briefing. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. And thank you for approving the agenda tonight, which is a little bit different and differently ordered than normal. But thank you for your flexibility as we try and accommodate a few different moving pieces. So our first item tonight, a little ahead of where it would normally be, is an update on the state legislative calendar. As we've discussed a few times over the course of this legislative session, we're trying some new things this year in order to make sure that the right information is getting to the council at the right time. And there are a lot of things moving in Olympia. And so our pattern is going to be holding to the first meeting of the month having a legislative update. We have now passed a couple of waterfall cutoffs. And so it'll be good to hear a little bit more about what is still happening, what is moving forward. If you have any questions, then we are very fortunate tonight to be joined by Shelley Helder from Gordon Thomas Honeywell, who is also the city's contract lobbyist. And Shelley, thanks for joining us tonight. And I will turn things over to you.
Great. Well, thank you. Chime in if you cannot hear me. Otherwise, I will keep proceeding.
Doing well.
We are on day 54 of the state legislative session, so we are halfway there. We, as City Manager said, we have passed two cutoff deadlines. The next cutoff is March 12th, when all bills must pass out of their House of origin. The House bills have to pass the House. Senate bills have to pass the Senate to remain under consideration. At this point in the process, both chambers are spending their days in caucus and on the floor debating and voting on bills. While floor action is occurring, while the legislature is debating various policies, there are conversations about the budgets. The state has three budgets: the operating, the capital, and the transportation. The one that is often referred to or talked about most in the news is referred to as the state budget. That's the operating budget. And that is the one that is facing some of the greatest challenges. Just last week, Governor Ferguson proposed some pretty significant cuts to state services that help to address the shortfall that the legislature is facing. The governor does not typically play a role in the budget development at this stage in the process. But because Governor Ferguson did not develop his recommended budget, which was developed instead by Governor Inslee, he wanted to share his thoughts on how he thought the legislature could achieve some savings. So that's the reason for a slightly different approach or different process this year than in years past. Ultimately, the decision about what programs to cut and what revenue to raise, those will be decisions made by the legislature. And then, of course, they can be vetoed or signed into law by the governor. Not as publicly discussed, but challenging nevertheless, is the transportation budget. The state transportation budget in this upcoming biennium is facing a billion-dollar shortfall. There, it's almost certain at this point in the process that there will be a combination of a delay in projects that would otherwise be funded in this upcoming biennium, as well as some type of new revenue in order to achieve a balanced budget. The third budget is the capital budget. And because of the pressures on both operating and transportation, there is a lot of demand on the capital budget to kind of meet the needs that people have around the state that are not able to be met through the transportation or operating budget. So that's kind of the high-level picture of where we're at in the legislative session. I do want to just provide a really quick update on some of the city's priorities. So as you all know, the city adopts legislative agenda. And this year, your legislative agenda has five priorities on it. The first one is related to the preservation of the Shelton View Forest for recreational purposes. This item, though there's not much to report on, we have made some progress this session in terms of identifying what a path forward can be for the future. One of the challenges with advancing this in a substantial way this year has been the turnover in the leadership at Department of Natural Resources. And so that's an agency that we need to work with closely to achieve this outcome. And so we're continuing work there. The next priority is a $1.9 million request from the state's capital budget for the Woodcrest Utility Project. And this is, as we've talked about, a really ambitious capital budget request. And given the demand on the capital budget this year, it is going to be a challenging request to secure. Representative Dewar has prioritized this as one of her top projects that she would like to see funded in the capital budget. And so we've been working closely with her on that. The third priority is regarding multimodal connections. And it's both a request for the legislature to make investments in multimodal infrastructure, as well as adopt policies that incentivize jurisdictions to make multimodal improvements. Because of the strain on the transportation budget, it's not likely that there's going to be significant investment in local multimodal resources. There are some policies that the legislature is considering, not necessarily funding-related, but things like developing a shared streets framework, a little bit more like European-style, where there's cars and bikes and people. And frankly, I think the multi-use path in Bothell, and I'm forgetting the specific term for it, is a little bit of the vision that's hoped for in this legislation without having to make a state route become a local jurisdiction without the jurisdictional change that's needed in order for that project to have come to fruition. The third priority is around, really, it's a policy stance that the city is wanting to prioritize removing barriers to the construction of housing and increasing construction of housing as a way to help address the housing affordability challenges around the state. There have been a lot of bills introduced on this topic. And so what we have tried to do is kind of elevate and lean in on the ones that we think are going to make the biggest difference. One of the ones that we've been really engaged in is the bill to establish statewide parking minimums. That bill is Senate Bill 5184. It's already passed the Senate, and it is now in the House Local Government Committee, where it is waiting for a public hearing. The last item on the city's legislative agenda is just ongoing, I guess, monitoring of the funding that we've previously been awarded and making sure that there is awareness of funding that's needed in the future for the Bothell Way multimodal improvement project. So there is $7 million that's been allocated to this project over several years. Because the project is already underway, it's really good indication that the money will not be pushed out into the future. Like, there is some concern for other city projects, not necessarily Bothell, but other jurisdictions. And however, we want to make sure that the legislature is aware in addition to that this amount in the future, there will be a need for more state support to bring this project to completion. So that was a really quick and high-level summary of where we're at in the session and where the city's priorities stand. I will stop talking there and see if there are any questions, since really, this is a check-in for you all. Opportunity for you to weigh in on any thoughts you may have.
Councilmember Alderks?
Thank you, Mayor. Shelley, it's good to see you. Thank you for the update. I especially appreciate how you kind of covered each of our priorities. There are also a number of other bills that we've expressed interest in. Some of them didn't make it past the cutoff. Some of them have and are moving forward. And there are a couple that have come to my attention that I wanted to just ask you about and then also check in on some, it's like, how do I want to say this? On the ways that cities are, like, are there, let me be direct. Are there bills that we are kind of out in front of other cities on and are finding that there's, like, AWC is representing a position that does not match the position of the city? And can we, like, talk about what some of those challenges might be for those bills going forward? Okay. All right. I'm going to head over to a couple of bills related to workers' rights. This came to my attention. The MLK labor reached out to cities around job protections for paid family leave and medical leave, the right to bargain over AI in public sector workforces, and recognizing occupational diseases for first responders. Are you familiar with the status of where those bills are at now?
All of those bills, no. I have heard discussions about those bills in passing, but off the top of my head, no, I don't know where each of them stand.
Okay. Because I recognize that there's a lot of changes that are occurring as cutoffs happen. And so I don't even know if these bills have passed cutoffs. And so I wanted to check in with you on those. Is that something you could follow up with me on?
And we can, yeah, Councilmember, if you can also, we can touch bases, maybe even after tonight's meeting, and we can do a quick follow-up.
Cool.
So, yeah, we'll work on getting an updated council.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And it might be like the conversation around, you know, how Bothell might have different priorities than other cities, and that might lead to some tension within AWC. That might be a conversation that we want to have later as well. But I just wanted to let you know that that is an area that I'm interested in discussing further. And I don't know if some of my colleagues might have some thoughts on that as well.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. I wasn't going to have a question. Thank you for being here, Shelley. I also would like to kind of, at some point, talk through, and maybe it's in small group sessions, but just talk through kind of the challenge of, I think the parking bill is a good example of one, where we just have a different take than AWC. And it's very weird to be in a position where we are advocating for something, and then a group that we pay membership dues to is advocating for something different. And then it's like, I don't know. It just feels like who's on first. So I'd love to talk through that at some point, just kind of seconding that.
And overall, I think Shelley can tag that for a follow-up. I think one thing, just as a reminder on that, is there's, I think AWC just told us recently, something like 282 cities that belong to AWC. So there's going to be times when some particular cities disagree with the majority of organizations. And that is where the value of, for the city council to develop your legislative agenda and your legislative policy manual. You're right, there are times where then things are not aligned overall in terms of what cities are asking for. But I also am thinking back of some of the communications that you all have had, both in testifying for specific bills and also in meetings with representatives, of being able to articulate the why behind Bothell's position, I think is really helpful for lawmakers to hear, and the specifics. And also, I know, I'm thankful for Shelley's support during the session because, as councilors are aware, staff meets every week to go over what are the bills that are moving forward, especially early in the session when there's thousands. And even if there's things where sometimes the majority of what is, the narrative is, is whether something is supported or opposed. And being able to, even if we have a different voice, being able to articulate some technical challenges, specific of something that this council would support, and here's something that can be done to make it stronger in terms of implementation. All of that goes into really helping the state lawmakers have more information than simply just saying we like it or we don't like it. So I think all of that together, in total, hopefully by the end of the session, helps strengthen bills. And the bottom line is, both of you have asked that we talk more of a strategy of how does that look? And how do we make sure that our voice is most effective? And we'll certainly do that.
Yeah. The one thing I would add to that as well is, AWC's positions are, some positions are, they've been adopted by their Legislative Priorities Committee. And so that's something that they work on throughout the interim months. Positions on other bills are influenced by input that they receive from cities during the legislative session. And so one example of that, where they've heard from enough cities that, and there's enough difference of opinion amongst the city family that they have just opted to no longer weigh in on the bill. An example of that is the Hospital 1175. It's called Small Business in Residential Areas, but we would call it like the Neighborhood Cafes Bill. They have heard from a lot of cities that really support that. We would love to see that bill pass. And they have some member cities that are still concerned about state directing that type of land use decision. And so as an organization, AWC has said, okay, well, that's a bill where we have mixed direction from our members on, and so we're not going to weigh in. So I guess, I think, to your point, it is a conversation worth having. And I think AWC is eager to hear from their members and try to make sure that they're representing their members' opinions well. And sometimes they get put in a tough position when there's a variety of views.
That's a helpful response. I really do appreciate that. And thank you for the thought you put into it.
Last chance. Going, going. All right. Shelley, thank you so much. I don't have any other questions. I appreciate your coming here. I know this is a really challenging session for a lot of our priorities, but we appreciate the work that you do anyway. So thank you for that. And on the follow-up, I'll just let the city manager know that like when Councilmember Alderks and you talk about the bills, the MLK labor broke out, I'd love to see us supporting those if they're still going or viable.
Yeah, we'll do a review. I'll get something out to council, and then we can talk about where that lines up with existing policy or if there's any gaps.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much, Shelley. Really appreciate you. All right. Next up is public engagement opportunities. If you're a regular, you'll notice the order is a little bit different tonight. If you're not, you probably won't. And that's okay, too. You probably do more fun things on Tuesday nights. We have the Art Exhibit and Bothell Art Walk. You can visit the City Hall Art Gallery to see Sherri Ying Rudin's art on display through April 3rd. And you can meet Sherri in person during a Community Bothell Art Walk Thursday, March 13th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. All right. Next up is proclamations. All right. We have a proclamation tonight for Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Whereas disability is a natural part of the human experience and in no way diminishes the right of individuals to participate in or contribute to society, whereas Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month provides the opportunity to raise awareness about the inclusion of people with developmental disabilities in all facets of community life and acknowledge the systemic barriers that people with disabilities face in connecting with the communities in which they live. And whereas we recognize the many accomplishments of people with developmental disabilities who come from all racial, ethnic, educational, societal, and economic backgrounds and who are invaluable members of our community as neighbors, coworkers, classmates, voters, friends, and family. Whereas we strive to increase developmental disabilities awareness and acceptance by challenging preconceived and outdated attitudes and beliefs about the abilities of people with developmental disabilities. And whereas we recognize examples of disability inclusion in our community, including organizations like Kindering, the Arx of Snohomish in King County, and the Alyssa Burnett Center that are dedicated to supporting and celebrating people with disabilities through pediatric and adult therapies, recreation activities, and life skill classes. And whereas we recognize that equitable experiences and full inclusion are matters of justice and call for the shared responsibility of community members to foster welcoming, accessible, and supportive environments, policies, and systems for all. Now, therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim March 2025 is Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in the City of Bothell and encourage local businesses, community organizations, and city staff to actively and intentionally review their practices to make sure individuals of all ages who have intellectual and developmental disabilities are included in their programs and welcome in their facilities. And we have members from the Alyssa Burnett Adult Life Center today, John, Ben, and Daniel here to accept. Come on up. You can press a button and say a few words. I'm going to sign these, and I'll be right down there.
Hello, everybody. My name is Benjamin Moore. On April 8th, 2014, the Alyssa Burnett Adult Life Center opened its doors, welcoming not only the Bothell community, but the greater Seattle and Puget Sound community as a whole. For the past almost 11 years, we have strived to welcome people with developmental and intellectual disabilities. And we are thankful for you, the City of Bothell, and the support that you have given us. But on that note, I mean, we're all aware of, you know, developmental disabilities, autism, ADHD, intellectual disabilities. And I'm glad that you brought up a really good point because we need to go beyond awareness, and we need to get to acceptance. By accepting people with developmental disabilities, not only do you support, you know, people, have them, you know, live more rich, more fulfilling, you know, better quality of lives. It also really makes everybody else feel good, working together and, you know, coming together for the betterment of the community, for the betterment of society. And, you know, inclusion is just really, you know, a basic, you know, thing that we should be doing, you know? Disability rights are human rights. And, you know, as the slogan of the Disability Rights Movement goes, nothing about us without us. So thank you for having this proclamation, dedicating it in the month of March. City of Bothell, thank you very much, and have a great night.
Hello, everybody. My name is John Winberg. I have been a resident and a worker here at the City of Bothell since I was young. I also have, was a student at the Alyssa Burnett Center when we first opened April 8th of 2014. And now have been a staff there for three years. I have come into the world with a disability and grew up, and it was hard to find services back then. And what I have to say is that we need more services for more folks. So any way we can provide that so that we can be engaged in our community as a whole, and we can have the stuff that we all should have as members. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bothell City Council. Thank you, neighbors. We are representing the Alyssa Burnett Center. We're right up the road on Bothell Way, next to the Rite Aid over there. And John and Ben have said so much so well already. So I'd like to take this time to just invite all of you to be our neighbor, to be our community partner. We're already so grateful for our partnership with the City of Bothell. Thank you. With Gabby Kuna, works very closely with our students. And, yeah, we still could use a lot of support, a lot of help, and from the community, that kind of means active participation. So we could always use help with events. You all have a lot of businesses out there, and our students are adults with disabilities. You know, we need exposure to workforce, to various experiences, to volunteer opportunities, to workplace opportunities. As well as, your businesses would also benefit from the sunshine that our students bring. So just inviting you to come and be our neighbor. Come and visit us. We love having visitors. Our students love having visitors. You'll see. But we really look forward to working with all of you in any capacity so that we can be neighbors together. So thank you. You'll notice all of us, actually, very appropriately, as the proclamation stated, but many of us are wearing our RISE gear. And at the Alyssa Burnett Center, we agree to RISE, which means respect, include, support, enjoy. And I think we can do that in Bothell as well. So thank you.
All right. Let's go. We're going to get a picture. All right. Moving on to public comment. The city has accepted- All right, moving on to public comment. The city has accepted public comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. I only received one written comment today, and that was from City Office REIT Vice President Simon Kuhn regarding the comprehensive plan amendment application. I do not have anybody signed up to speak. However, if anybody in the audience wishes to do so, please step to the podium, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Josh Friedman, and I work alongside City Office REIT, which is the office owner that has applied to you for legalization of dense and transit-oriented multifamily housing on its site in Bothell. I was really excited to hear just now that one of the council's top four priorities to its lobbyist was to remove barriers to new housing. So I'm delighted to report to you that your last agenda item, the work session coming up, is an opportunity for you all to take a chance to do just that. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to review our letter, but if not, I'll briefly sum up that City Office owns three low-scale commercial office buildings and surface parking lots on a 10-acre site in Bothell, which it acquired in February 2019. About two-thirds of this 10 acres is parking. These buildings are leased to one primary tenant, Seattle Genetics, also known as CGEN, which is a local company that was acquired by Pfizer in December of 2023. CGEN occupies about half of its rented space on this site and does not currently use the rest of the space they have rented. We have a positive and long-term relationship with CGEN as our office tenant, and we don't expect any immediate changes. However, the purchase of the tenant by Pfizer and the region's ongoing post-pandemic uncertainty in the office market are compelling us to explore future site options because a tenant change could happen very suddenly. An example of such a change came just last year up in Everett. CGEN permanently halted a $350 million construction project just three months after Pfizer's acquisition. So as the owner of this CGEN office site here in Bothell, City Office submitted an application for consideration of an amendment to legalize multifamily on this site as a potential option if the office tenant leaves and the site cannot easily be re-rented to another office tenant. This option is critical because office parks are not in the same demand that they once were. If this site becomes vacant under its current zoning, it would likely be locked in for the foreseeable future as vacant suburban sprawl. But under our proposal, we would like to make it ready for immediate reconfiguration into dense and transit-oriented housing. The amendment received robust discussion at the Planning Commission and a split vote, and considering the Planning Commission's feedback, our recent letter suggests that the council docket this amendment with a request that staff and the applicant work together to support new multifamily housing near transit and keep encouraging employment together. We're the only amendment on the docket for consideration this year, and we welcome the opportunity to work with staff on a compromise approach that serves this council's goals of making it easier to build housing. Thanks for your consideration. I'll be here all evening and happy to answer any questions you might have about the proposal.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, next up is a study session. We have a joint meeting with the Parks Board. Do we want to take a little break before we do that, or we want to jump straight into it? Is Rami here? All right, let's just get right to it then.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to everyone on the Parks and Recreation Board as well. Thank you for giving extra time for this joint meeting. And Council, just to reorient back to our last meeting when you had a joint meeting with the Planning Commission, again, this is an effort to respond to feedback that came from the boards and commissions of looking to have more of a connection with city council. There are some questions that you'll be seeing that are prompts to hopefully try and get through each of them within an hour, to have some time to, again, to hear from each other and share information. With that, I'm going to turn things over to Blaine Land, who is our Recreation and Community Event Coordinator, and also serves then as the staff support and liaison to the Parks and Recreation Board. That'll turn it over to Blaine.
Thank you, City Manager. Yeah. I did have a quick question. Is someone keeping time? About 45 minutes, an hour?
You're doing just fine. You'll know.
We didn't have a question.
You'll know.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. I know it's a little bit awkward. We do have a little brief presentation behind you, but I sincerely appreciate having this opportunity. On behalf of the Parks and Recreation Board, I am pleased to be here tonight as a staff liaison to introduce one another, share some insight to the overview of the Parks and Recreation, an overview of their accomplishments and some of their priorities, and then lead it to your group discussion. What I would like to do real quick is just provide a brief overview for those in attendance and with council is state the municipal, Bothell Municipal Code. So, the Parks and Recreation Board serve as an advisory capacity to the city council regarding the expansion and operation of the city parks and recreational facilities, programs, and services. They do not have an administrative role or supervisory role, but they are paramount in many of our successful accomplishments in the Parks Department. So tonight's meeting is to provide a dialogue between you both, between city council and our Parks Board, and I will give a brief presentation encapsulating some of their accomplishments in the last two years. This board today has been with us since April of 2023, and I thought it was very important to give that snapshot of the two years of progress and work they've accomplished. But before I get ahead of myself, I do want to introduce the board. As I know some of you have met interchangeably through other engagement efforts, I do want to give just a warm introduction to who we have in attendance today. So feel free to wave, or we put our nameplates out so we all know who one another was. So--
It was a really good idea.
Thank you. So we have Nicholas Borr, position number three. We have Sheila Brycy, position number four. We have Manny Ocampo, position number five. Maggie Catlin, position number six. Whitney Nagabauer, position number seven, and she is our chairperson. We also have an intended Jace Bronka, position number nine, and he is our youth member. So, a quick overview, what we wanted to highlight was the current projects. So, current projects, as many of you have been aware of, is the Cedar Grove Inclusive Playground. In addition, the Parks Board has been working on the Park of Bothell Landing conceptual design that was phase one that we just went through, and also the First Lieutenant Nicholas Madrazo Memorial Park. Other elements of the parks has ongoing is very involved with volunteer efforts, events, and programs, stakeholder development. I do want to give a big accolades to this group. They have built a very robust stakeholder development through all of our engagement efforts that have really helped the consistency of who we're outreach per project. Other ongoing focus is this group does do subcommittee plans and priorities dependent on the programs set forward. Of course, they do support the administrative and operational goals led by, you know, conversations here at council and at the department level. They are very advantageous of learning from the community and user groups. They are out in the parks, and just learning from the insights from our community has been paramount to the success of their work the last two years. Of course, their also ongoing focus has been the capital facilities and asset replacements. And we also wanted to highlight today the PROS Plan. So, the future projects, as many have heard, the PROS Plan and the former Wayne Golf Course master planning, this core group will be heavily involved in the engagement, along with our project planner and consultants. So to kind of give a fun visual of timelines, I wanted to highlight this slide. It essentially shows from April 2023 through March 2025, today's date, of some of the big achievements that this group has accomplished. So, from April, the board, we hosted a board orientation. So something that we found unique with this group was, and many of our boards, is to host a comprehensive overview of what is your roles, what are your responsibilities, but what questions do you have. That really helped us go into the council's 2040 vision, the PROS Plan, the former PROS Plan, and other initiatives that were already set forward as they came onto the board. And then right after that, they jumped right into the Cedar Grove Inclusive Playground. So you can see right in June, two months later, they went into stakeholder development and just outreach with the Inclusive Playground. And that completed, that work completed in December of 2023. In September 2023, so in the mix of both the project and just getting their foot wet in all the many things that parks has going on, we hosted an immersive tour of the parks and trails and open spaces. So it was really getting in a van. Everybody got to see the parks and trails and open spaces. They got to see the Bothell Operations Center. They got to meet operations crew. Scott Purdy, our operations manager, was also there to give historical knowledge, along with Nick Strup, our director. And it was great for them to have oversight when we're talking about the PROS Plan, along with all these other projects. So that was a really great initiative that we did in September. And then another snapshot that we wanted to show is the work with the Park of Bothell Landing master planning conceptual design. Stakeholder development and the community engagement was about a year-long process. So here we are today in March 2025, and they are going to be working on the PROS Plan, the former Wayne Golf Course, and ongoing projects. I like to highlight within these achievements is about five of them meet the priorities within the 2040 council vision, and about six of them also highlight some of the former PROS Plan. So I just applaud you all, and I appreciate everything that they do. And so lastly, I wanted to just highlight how the board functions to achieve these priorities. So, more often, we have a monthly board meeting. So every second Thursday of every month, we meet. In addition, we do staff briefings at the board meetings to give oversight of the continuation of these projects. And there are subcommittee work plans, along with communication and engagement efforts. And then, as you have seen, our chairperson, Whitney Nagabauer, has come to quarterly council conversations and hosted just updates on the park. So, that is my time of talking. I just really wanted to give a highlight and give a snapshot of this amazing group and the Parks Board today. The Parks Board is aware that tonight is a discussion between you both, and I am going to give it over. These questions right here are just some starting points. I know some of the board members have other questions, but I'm going to give it over to Whitney to start off the discussion tonight.
Thank you, Blaine, and thank you, council, for taking the time to meet with us today. We're really looking forward to getting to know you face-to-face. It's been a big conversation, a long time in the works, to be able to understand a lot more about the roles and responsibilities of the board, and to really build different mechanisms to have two-way conversations. So, thank you. As Blaine said, this board is extremely engaged, and we're excited to share with you today. We are really interested in having discussions to understand the role of the board in supporting your 2040 vision, and find the most effective ways to communicate, collaborate, and serve the community through safe, inclusive, accessible, and beautiful parks and programming within the City of Bothell. So, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for adding another boring meeting. There was a lull in the conversation. I talk, it happens. Did you have, were you going on to say something else? Did I interrupt you? Answer me honestly. Did I interrupt you?
No, you did not.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you all for coming out tonight and adding another meeting on top of the meetings that we already have, because we love meetings a lot. I'm really looking forward to the conversation. This is near and dear to my heart. I was just telling Councilmember Dodd, I can't believe we're redoing the PROS Plan already, because when I was on the Parks Board is when we did the PROS Plan the last time, and it's one of those like, oh, time still works. So, yeah, thank you. And if you have more of leading this conversation plan, I'm going to mute.
I'll go ahead and jump in. Hi, I'm Sheila. And tied to the first one on how we come to you or we understand the budget discussions, one of the things I did do is look back at your vision for 2040. And part of it was a joyful and healthy way of life. And you talk about the consider a voter-approved parks levy. And what does that look like from a timing and an involvement of the Parks Board to help support that from your
I'm going to tag Kyle, because I think anyone could take a stab at that, but I think being reminded of sort of the, there's a specific way that the city seeks out a levy, and I think that we would all work together to shape that. But, Kyle?
Yeah, and Nick and Blaine will correct me when I'm wrong, but one of the things that has already been mentioned is really, I think, the biggest thing that you're going to be able to do to help start that work, which is the updating of the PROS Plan. Any conversation about whether or not there'd be a communication or a conversation with the community about investing in parks and recreation really would start there. And again, it is, as the mayor mentioned, it does feel recent of the last PROS Plan, but there was such a global shift with the pandemic, too, that I think updating it and looking at where are we at, and what did we learn from that experience about how this community looks to open spaces and recreation opportunities for a full life. So, that work will really start things out. And then, as Councilmember Dodd noted, there are then some, there are some things that we can and we can't do in terms of moving forward, but I think there will be opportunities for the Parks Board to be able to support any efforts in terms of, again, really shaping and advising the council on if there's, what would be included and if it makes sense to go out to have that conversation with the community. So, that first step of should we and when, well, those conversations will largely be starting with the Parks and Recreation Board. So it will not slip past you, I promise.
And I would also say that a lot of the work that has been highlighted already, and a lot of the work that you're doing the next year, is work that we need to do before we can go out and ask the community, like, hey, do you want to pay for these amenities? Because right now, we're developing what a lot of them look like, you know? And if we do go out and ask the community if they want to pay for upgraded amenities, we need to be able to show them what they're getting, and that's what all this work does. One of the really frustrating things about government is how long things take often. So like, I totally, totally get that. I joined the Parks Board because I thought, hey, there should be mountain bike trails at the Wayne property. I'd like to see mountain bike trails there. I wonder if I could make that happen. And I don't know how many years later we are, but like, it's gotten a little, my mountain bike hustle's gotten a little out of hand, but like, it's gone well, I guess, but also like, we're about ready to start the master plan for that. Like, and you know, when I joined in 2017 or 18 or something like that, that was my pie in the sky. So, like, you're doing that work right now, and we really appreciate it. And I think there is a want in this community for more amenities, and like, if we can get to a point where we feel good about it, then I'll feel personally very good about it.
Yeah, thanks, council. My name is Manny Ocampo. Many of you know me. I just wanted to reiterate, first of all, thank you for inviting the board. You have an amazing Parks and Recreation Board. The breadth of experience and expertise and interest in parks and recreation is considerable, even when you were here. It's good.
It's gotten a lot better since then.
I did want to support the idea. First of all, things do take a long time. It's frustrating. One of our roles is to be part of your voice out in the community. We're out, we have a lot of outreach efforts. The staff has done a tremendous job of, when we were doing the master planning for the Park of Bothell Landing, we had open houses and surveys and all of that. The feedback that we're getting is very, very positive. Coming out of COVID, coming out of really difficult budget times, is a recognition of how important parks and recreation is to the quality of life in our community. And I think people are really recognizing that. We haven't always had a-- We haven't always had a, um, active Parks and Recreation programs in our, in our community. We haven't. For as long, as old as we are, it's, it's more recent. We didn't even have a department until, I don't know, 10 years ago or 15, 10 or 15 years ago? Nick would know. And so it's, it's, the progression of support for Parks and Recreation, I've seen, has been significant. It's going to take a while to develop the master plans, to, to adopt, design, et cetera, et cetera. But this community is ready to take a look at that and to move those projects forward. The Park of Bothell Landing, the former Wayne Golf Course Park, I had to come up with a name for that park. And the Bejono Park and, and the Inclusive Park, those are all big projects. They're going to take money. This community, I believe, is ready to support dipping into their pockets to look at improving the quality of life in our community. I hope the council recognizes that, works with us to try and, and move forward on giving them that opportunity to say what they really want. And the last thing I will say, because I can go on, you know. Now, the last thing I will say is that it's important when you go to the people and ask them to be as absolutely specific as you can. You're going to vote for this, that will get you this, that will look like this, and this is who it will serve, et cetera, et cetera. And we've gone to the public before when that wasn't quite as clear. I won't go into past history, but it's, it's really important to do that. This board can help you with that. I'm looking forward to working with you on this effort. It's going to take some time, but this is an exciting time for Bothell Parks in this community.
Can I jump in here quickly? To piggyback off of that, I'm not a strategist, strategist. But I sit there and I think, we just voted on making it easier for funding for projects. I think the community involvement and investment is like first priority. And I don't know, that's where your brains come in on this, is what is, what are the core needs that we can bring before the community? And then how can we hustle for either crowdfunding? Or I'm, I have no, no pride, no shame in putting something like with the name Phillips on it? If they were to fund something really great for our parks? But I think, I'm guessing what we would need to do is get the groundwork going of community investment and then go, now that we can do this legally, start finding ways to enrich and embellish.
I'd like to give credit to our Parks Board for even bringing up the conversation about sponsorships and, and bringing business community in so that we could accept donations. I know I've talked to some of you about my, my surprise when there was no way for me to donate to our Parks Department. And without, you know, some of you coming forward and talking to council about, with us about that. And, and just recently, that came on to our agenda, and we were able to approve the development of code that would allow us to accept donations and for the city to form partnerships with local businesses that could then be used to support the, the funding of some of these projects. And I, like, the fact that, so I was talking to Erin, who's on staff, and he said it was his first time in his career that he's been able to work from like, concept to design or concept to completion of a park. But we're working on four? Like, that he could wait his entire career to now do four at one time? Like, that is just astounding what our community is currently working on. And it's moving forward, and people are excited about it. I also am really just appreciative that Sheila brought up the council vision. Thank you for being familiar with it and for looking at it. Is that something that all of you have been able to like discuss? Okay, you guys are, I love that. I love that you are aware and familiar with, you know, our, our efforts as a council to kind of set a vision for the community. And I think for us, kind of to answer your question, Sheila, around the levy is that we were curious if that might be a pathway forward to bring back some of the programs that we had lost in the pandemic, but also to, to develop amenities and make sure that we have, I'm going to, I'm going to pick a Councilmember Dodd talking point, just have greater equity between the counties when it comes to parkland and, and usage, recognizing that Snohomish County just doesn't have as many parks for their population base as King County side of Bothell does. Those are the types of things that I think we are hoping for you as a board to look at and, and work for. And I don't, one question I have is, how involved are you in the Pool and Community Center topics? That's an NPRSA thing, so maybe it doesn't come to you. No.
The short answer is no. However, Director Strup and I have had some conversations about it, about the processes that are happening, and had bounced the idea around about having a representative come and give a briefing to the board, because it does pertain to our work, for sure.
I love the idea of that. I think that makes a lot of sense. You, you guys should know what is going on with the other Parks and Rec body that exists and serves our community, which is NPRSA. And the fact that, you know, we have some beautiful designs for the Park of Bothell Landing. I'm currently looking at the, at the vision. And just thank you for all of your work on that, for your effort. This is very much an appreciation for Blaine, for our cultural experiences in the city of Bothell. But I also see board members out there volunteering at those events, and just thank you very much for being involved in those. I've seen you tabling for community engagement efforts. I've really seen you all out there and engaged and participating. So I just really appreciate all that you have done and are doing. And I think that having a conversation like this is an important part of making sure that, that our, our community bodies are working together well. And so, yeah. With that, can I, can I point us to one of our questions? Can we start like, talking about the first one? What role can the Parks Board play in advocating for parks during budget discussions to ensure continued investment and prioritization? What are, like, we might have thoughts, but what are your thoughts? How do you see yourselves wanting to be involved in those discussions? What opportunities do you feel like you have had in the past or want to see in the future?
Good, what a great question. We'd like to hear your guys' vision, too. But I think from my, from my point of view, again, we are your eyes and ears for Parks and Recreation. As we develop pros plans and which, which relate right back to your vision, your comprehensive plan, which relate back to what the community expects. You've done surveys, community surveys, and, and we take a look at those results and we talk about how those fit into your plans. And so I know that, that Whitney brings a quarterly, quarterly reporter, you know, a periodic report to you on what we're working on. And hopefully, that will provide you the opportunity to give us feedback on, well, we've heard this, and your feedback is great, because that fits into what we're looking to hit here and, and there'd be a two-way conversation. We want to be part of the conversation. We want to be part of your, your planning so that we could move forward. I think it was a really interesting point you made, Councilmember Aldrich, about that Bothell's unique. We're in two counties. We have a school district that encompasses, what, four cities, two counties. We have the PRSA, which is, PS, PRSA, yeah? Which is, the school district is their, is their boundary. And so when you're looking at funding opportunities, there's going to be overlap of jurisdictions and, and et cetera. And so that's going to be a challenge, but it also provides a tremendous opportunity, too, because it spreads out the costs and, and increases the, your, your target audience in terms of what you, what you're trying to accomplish as well. I see that as a positive, even though it's very complicated.
That's a, that's a really good point. And I missed my chance earlier to jump in after you spoke the first time, Manny. I wanted to take a moment to say thank you to all of you. Like, this is one of the most involved boards I've seen. I kind of was like, I wish I was on the Parks Board. Like, you guys do a lot of cool stuff. And as an extrovert, it's like stuff that I'm like interested in, too. And so it's really cool, and it's, it's a really good, I feel like, time to be on this board, because Bothell has gone through like financial difficulties. There was, you know, a Parks Levy that didn't pass years ago. And it, when we go to prepare another one, we do have to be really on our game with it and explain, like, this is what will come if people vote on this. And we've seen success with our Public Safety Levy and our Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy when we can articulate what the benefit will be compared to what people are paying for. And so I think there, there is an appetite for it, too. And it's also, and I'm trying to connect back to the fact that we do have like four parks that we're talking about. Like, that is a really cool story that Councilmember Aldrich was talking about. And it, it hasn't happened a lot. Like, I think about, I grew up in Bothell, and some of the playgrounds are the same that I played on. And I gave the, the school board a little bit of guff that Frank Love had the same playground that I played on when I went there, and it's, it's being replaced. And we're cycling through these replacements, because our city is kind of healthy financially in a way that we haven't had for, let's say, a decent chunk of Amanda's life in Bothell for an unspecified number of years. And it's, it's really exciting, but it's also, it's a lot of responsibility, because it, it means that, like, we haven't seen new parks coming out at the same rate. And I know, I, Councilmember Mankin and I are the, the two councilmembers that live in Snohomish County, so Councilmember Aldrich's definitely scooped me there. Looking up parks, I think we have like two of the 16 playgrounds for 49% of the city. And the population split, that's a geography split, not a population split, but it's, it's, we have a lot to address. Like, there are still no mountain bike passes, the mayor was talking about. I think there will be a lot of competing interests where we kind of have to really work on, how do we give a little bit to all these different areas of concern, right? Like, how do we make sure there's lots of broad access to recreation in like, not just the Parks Levy, but in all of our Parks planning? And then also just kind of, it's a hefty lift, I guess, is what I'm saying. Like, we are trying to sort of course correct for, for years of just not being able to take action on our Parks and Recreation in the way that maybe we would have hoped for. And then, what a time to do it, though. Like, we have our great staff. I know this isn't staff appreciation, but like, thank you. And our great Parks Board. And we have our great residents who are like, ready. I think they've been ready longer than the rest of us. So I'm hoping that we can like, get something good out of this. But it is going to be very like, there's so much to address, too. So I think the pros plan is going to be both very fascinating and very key to figuring out what is on everyone's mind. Because I'm sure if you just went around this whole table, everybody would have like one thing that's like top of mind. And it wouldn't all be the same thing, I'm sure. So I'm going to stop rambling now. But it's, it's, we're doing a lot, and I'm really happy to be doing it with this board. Like, I'm super impressed with all of you.
You didn't think everybody would say mountain bike trails?
No.
Okay.
So if I could, if I could kind of add to the conversation that's been circulating as far as, you know, community feedback and our engagement, I, I'm not entirely sure we're allowed to do this, but, and part of this might pertain to bullet point three. But surveys, I feel like that is, I know we, we run our surveys. Another concern I have is that not everyone gets to our surveys. And I can tell people, I end the community a lot via work, just walking my dog. I can tell people to look on our website, take our surveys, make a public comment all day, every day, and I do. But one of the things I saw, where I think I saw the community most excited is when we were in the Park of Bothell Landing doing that cute little design, when we were designing the parks, we had people put dots on things. And there was a gentleman there, I believe his name was Philip, who worked for Parks, or, yeah, Parks. And he was doing surveys and collecting surveys. I think if we could go out and be survey pushers more, I think we would get a lot, a lot more responses. And again, I'm not sure if we're allowed to do that. But I do think that would be a really easy way for us to have more information that we can relay to you, whether it be if we're, I know plenty of people have opinions on budgets, whether it be budgets or what our next steps are in designing or general comments. I, I think that would be the best way to easily grab, grab community feedback. And the community, of course, influences our, our thoughts and decisions as well. And it's, it's just the more information, the better. So that's, that's one thing I'd like to throw out there, and then I'll probably come back to the community-based things if we have time at the end, because it doesn't pertain to any of those.
I just want to say that when you're like, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to say this or not, I smiled inside, because like, I don't want this to be like some super scripted thing where we can only talk about that. Like, if you guys have something to say to us, like, say it. And like, I'm more interested in what could go better than what's going great. So like, don't feel like you have to pretend that everything is going great. Like, if there are things that could be different, like, we want to know about that. Like, let's have a real conversation.
I was going to sneak in really quick and say, we, super quick.
Well, since you mentioned it.
We can, we can do that. So we tried to do that with our comprehensive plan. We had meetings all over the city. We do get broader and better feedback, especially partnering. Our DEI coordinator, Gabby, has partnered with community organizations. Like, the more we can talk to folks, the better. So like, you're totally on the right track there. Because just a regular, surveys get, I think, the same 200 people typically, if we're lucky. And we love to hear from them, but there's 49,800 people that aren't taking that survey. So the more we can hear from, the better. Maggie's turn, I'm tagging it in.
Maggie's about to blow us up.
Well, I want, I just want to take one second real quick and just thank Blaine tremendously. When I came on the board and we had some discussions about what am I supposed to be doing to be helpful, she got that pros plan out and got the council vision out and said, this is your guidebook, and this is what we're trying to implement, and has stressed that from day one, and that has been tremendously helpful. So huge kudos to her in helping us all work through that process. And then as well to all of you for inviting us here and taking the time to get to know us and understand. I do have a big question when it comes to the first one. And some people here know I'm a physical therapist. And one thing you might not know about physical therapy school is we talk a lot about accessibility in sidewalks and parks. And that is because of how important it is for health and wellness, but as well as just general life outcomes. In terms of resiliency, learning, stress regulation, resiliency, those things all come from repetitive movements, vestibular input. I'm not going to get too into the weeds, but it's something that's very close to my heart. When people don't have access to green spaces, it's a huge equity issue. And I think that that's some, sometimes when we think of parks and recreation, we think of dog parks and swings, and we forget the underlying seriousness that having access to green space and parks. And my main question for you is, when you think about parks and recreation and you think about the role of parks and recreation within our community, what does that mean to you? Like, where do you want to see us? My vision is very biased into the health realm. So kind of, what, what does that mean to you? And I think that helps us implement the vision, which is a little broad. It's, it's great, but a little hard to act on.
I'd love to respond, and the nerd in me sees the nerd in you. And I'm going to give you the human development answer, which is, for me, parks need to be serving people of all ages. And, and so I, you know, I think a lot of people, maybe, maybe this is just the early childhood educator in me, thinks that parks are for little kids, and that's not true. Parks are for little kids, and they're for their adults and their grandparents and every other age. And parks are very important for teenagers, and parks are very important for active adults who want to exercise. And so like, I'm, I'm really thinking about how, how do we design parks in our community so that every age is served well? So that there are amenities and, and features there? So where our community feels like they can both come together, but also like, get this, the, the enjoyment of like, just being out in nature and having, there's, there's a piece of like solitude that comes with coming, being out in our parks. And for me, you know, Bothell Landing is my, is not my closest park, but it is the park that I go to, to like, the park that I go to, to like, fill my soul. And, and I see Shelton View as a future potential version of that as well. And, and just knowing that I can, from, from my neighborhood, I can walk to Bothell Landing, but then from Bothell Landing, I can also walk to Wayne and get out there. Like, that, that connection is such a beautiful piece of our community because that means like, our one park is really like, one big park. Like, it's like two parks, but there's trails and they're connected with Blythe there, too. So it's really three. And it's kind of amazing that, that we even have that. And just to see, how do we develop that kind of complex of parks so that they're all very connected and, and there are features there for all ages? You know, we have the ability for the community to come together at Bothell Landing, and that's fantastic. Are there, are there ways that we can make them more connected and cohesive to one another? And I think, Sheila, you and I have talked about this in the past, too. So I really appreciate the question, because I had, you know, like, I think we all have a very personal relationship with our local parks. And so I get to, I got to reflect on that a little bit. Thanks.
And tied to that is, I think, a discussion, because one of your points under environmental stewardship, under the vision, includes develop public education that promotes and uses the existing trails and provides education about the natural habitat. And one of the things we've discussed, I volunteer at the North Shore Senior Center, and having the bridge closed was a big challenge for them. But also, just in the parks, and when I bring up that I am on the parks board, is the willingness to participate in the three-part model that you talked about. But how do you get there? You know, from a wayfinding and that kind of thing? And my question back to you, based on this is a priority, what does that look like for you from a public education standpoint and ensuring that the existing trails and there's an awareness?
I have a couple of thoughts. I love wayfinding and information boards, especially when somebody can stop and pause and look at the scenery and identify things that they would normally just walk past. And then Maggie, and it ties into seniors. I think, Maggie, you and I had a conversation a few years ago about vestibular health, which ties into the senior citizens. I'm always, people are just probably getting so tired. I really think that we need equipment for senior citizens, because their sense of balance tanks the older they get. And so having opportunities for them to be out and so, and mingle, I'm speaking specifically to this population, but they don't operate in isolation. But to have things that can also meet the need that, besides mental stimulation, there's the physical stimulation of something that's very helpful. And working on vestibular health is, when you go about just your normal course of life, you're not doing that. But if a park, if there's like, little facilities that can spur that on, as someone's coming from the senior center to, into, into Bothell, I think it'd be great.
Well, even tied to the senior population, I work at the Health and Wellness Center. We have the inclusion program also for younger adults with special needs. And I know they try and do field trips to Blythe Park and do those kind of things. But again, it is, I'm super excited about Cedar Park and being able to, you know, ensure that we do field trips there. But also, just being able, and I know it's all about money, Nick, and I've talked to Blaine a lot, the wayfinding is so important to the community, but especially the seniors and feeling safe and confident and understanding where they're going. And it's all tied in with the King County, you know, Mammoth Walk and everything like that. And is there a way to work with King County on that and that kind of thing? So those are just thoughts from my.
I'd also throw out, is there a way to work with Uta-Bothell and Cascadia on, on those? Because we have a lot of learners and a lot of experts in our community who could perhaps participate in the development of that public education that then becomes part of our trail system.
That was actually going to be one of my points to talk about. As someone who just graduated from Cascadia is now attending Uta-Bothell, I think there is, there is a lot of interest in our city government in general. I, you might not know it from my presence in meetings, but I'm a yapper. I talk a lot, usually. And I'm always trying to represent the city and represent, represent the parks board in specific. And I, I can say, I'm actually really shocked about how many people at that school do take advantage of those trails when they're on them. And they, they do, a shocking amount of my peers have dogs, small dogs, but dogs. And they use, they walk their dogs on those trails a lot. And I, I think that, I guess I'm more adding a comment of, I do think that's really important. What I've noticed is, I feel like especially the students do feel a lot of distance. They feel like they're not in the know. Mostly, it's commuter campus, so they might not be available to the, again, the surveys, the emails, checking the website. They're not used to that. But I, I would absolutely advocate for more engagement with the, with the schools. I know we do have quite a bit of engagement, especially on our native population side of things. But if we could find a way to reach more of those students and just get, get more programs involved, I can pretty much guarantee they would get tremendous support from, from students and a lot more interest. And I'll just shout out, because I've been on this board for a while now, there's a lot of interest from students who are going to be here three, four, sometimes six years, now that they have all these master's programs, that would absolutely love these opportunities. I feel like, they don't know about them. I talk about it all the time, they don't know about them. And that's kind of the common theme for the entirety of Bothell's amenities to those students.
I just want to say thank you for saying that, because I love that, because we are a college town. And like, we can either leverage that and like, have a really cool symbiotic relationship, or we can have a commuter campus that's disconnected from downtown that people drive in and out of. And like, I very much want the former in a lot of ways. So, thank you for that. And I wanted to answer your question earlier, Maggie. I, I, I had time to think about this as other people were talking, so I wrote it down. I said, I want everybody in our community to be able to enjoy playing outside, doing something that they enjoy and is relevant to their life. And really, so that's like, what I want. But what I really don't want is, I don't want people in our community who feel like the parks aren't for me. The parks are for somebody else. So I would just say that, like, you know, the gamut of age ranges, the gamut of ability levels, the gamut of interest, like, all of the things that, that, that make us unique, like, we should have parks that those people enjoy.
I was going to jump in here, too, and say, the pros plan is such an opportunity, especially with this parks board that's so deeply invested in our community, to learn where people learn about our parks, learn how people connect with nature in the park, or how it's helped their health, too. And kind of a surprise thing of this role on council is that people come to us with ideas for parks. And I was talking with some people that may be special interest about horticulture. And they came and they were excited because they were going to bring it to council. And I said, no, you're going to go through the parks board first. And I am so tremendously happy that they are, because your lens and your creativity is a really, it's a critical linchpin to the whole process, because you have gone through the pros planning process, you're going, continuing through that process, too. And so incorporating feedback and different, you know, maybe special interest communities or the wider community as a whole, when you're out in the park doing the tabling events, I think that's where a lot of the critical information comes from. And I would say that the parks are the people's property. And so we should curate the parks in a way that is respectful to the people and, and their wishes. And so it's, it's really great that we have such an involved and consistent parks board in you all. And I just, your role is really critical and important. And I'm so grateful for your, your volunteerism, too. So, thanks.
I had a question regarding the 2040 Vision. It lays out a very, very ambitious plan in parks. It's very, very exciting. But I really wanted to ask how you plan to balance these new parks, new exciting development projects, and also some of our lesser-known parks. There's a lot, when we did our tour, there's a lot of parks that have a lot of issues with access or facilities that are getting more and more dated. And so while it's really lovely to have these nice shiny new parks and new ideas and plans, how are we going to balance the resources, not overextend our operations staff, and just make sure that we have a really sustainable park system that's equitable for everybody?
Nick, what do you need?
We have a lot of talkers in this group, by the way, when you mentioned. So I think the answer to that is, is basically what the mayor said in maybe perhaps more formal terms. It's going to be relying on our experts. I don't think any of us come to city council thinking, I know everything about X topic. We have four former planning commissioners, one landmarks board member, one parks member, one civil service commissioner, with different amounts of years of experience on those boards. And then we all do different things professionally. It's unusual to have, I think, five of us still raising K through 12 children right now on a city council, but we do. We really have this scope of knowledge, but none of us are like, oh, if we build a mountain bike park, here's what the maintenance looks like. Or if we build, you know, all these different facilities. Like, I think one of my, one of the things that I roll over in my head a lot is something that I was told by one of our park staff, which is that everybody seems to want a dog park and a pickleball court in a park. But nobody wants to live by those facilities. And it's like, well, how do you cite a park that no one lives by, that's a neighborhood park that you can walk and play pickleball, right? Like, there's, that's sort of an impossible list. It's like, when I want dinner to be done before I'm hungry, and I'm the one who's supposed to cook it. There's no, you know. So it's, we need to, that, operations is part of that, right? Like, I think that's something that, that we have learned as a city when we look at, like, I'm a former planning commissioner, by the way, in case I'm one of those four, when we look at like, aging subdivisions. The developer put in the infrastructure, and now we have to replace it because it's 30 years later. So I think it's, it's an important conversation, because it's the levy and operations and getting that budget right. Like, it also has to take care of what we have. And that's, that's something that we haven't always prioritized as a city. That's, that's a good way to say that. So I really appreciate the question. I don't have a magic answer, but I think that's where we come in with, like, we're elected, but we're not doing the dated operations. We need our staff to tell us what we need. And to be fair, they're pretty great at that. So I, I definitely want that to be part of the conversation. And maybe that's part of the community education of the pros plan, is like, when we, you know, when we build this facility, this is what maintenance looks like. It's not, it's not a matter of just getting, you know, I'm trying to pick a random person in this room who might own a company, Manny Corp, to put their name on, on a park and be like, it's the Manny Corp pickleball courts, you know. But then, is he? Is it?
Manny the pickleball?
But it's, it's a matter of just planning ahead in a way that's super important. And that's where we really need that education, I think. To answer your question, because I, too, thought about it, I, I like a park that has facilities for everyone. I think about, I can go to Miner's Corner and play on the playground. I fit on all the equipment. It's delightful. Like, they have a parent-child swing. And when my son was younger and cared to look at me and swing like that, 1,000% best experience of my life. Now he wants to take turns pushing each other in the merry-go-round. That's fine. It's a little dizzying in your late 30s. But it's just something for everyone. And I love that we're moving toward inclusive parks. And I think having also the idea that not every park has to be everything for every person. And maybe that means in our parks, we have information about, hey, here's what's here, here's the facilities at other parks. So that's a lot of updating. But it could point people to, if they go to their neighborhood park, and they're like, man, I wish this had, you know, I don't know the formal name for what we're talking about with keeping healthy as you age, that, that kind of equipment. But maybe we can point out where that is in the city, so that somebody can go find that. Most of our parks, I think, are going to have to be specializing in one kind of recreation or a couple kinds of complementary recreation.
I'm going to jump in real quick. Was that you that posed that question? Or was that Whitney that posed that question?
Whitney.
I know, right? You can't tell the two of them apart. The, I'm going to not say anything else now. I would just say that, like, your guys' job as a board is to highlight that kind of stuff for us. Like, and we really appreciate that, because like, you know, you're, you're more into parks than we are. And like, our job is then to tell staff, hey, that's a good point. That's important to us. And then staff goes and tells us, like, here's what we need to be able to do that. And then, like, the biggest thing we do here is the budget every two years. And we have to make those competing decisions over, like, what we can do with the resources that we have, and like, how we might be able to acquire, you know, more resources. But I think just, just having that open conversation, so like, that you guys can be like, hey, like, let's make sure we don't leave the little parks behind in the neighborhoods while we do these like, big, cool, awesome things. Like, that's really important. And like, if there's nothing else that happens in this meeting, like, this meeting was worth it, just to hear that.
So I think it goes back to the first question about the budget process. So I know that the city has gone through a change in how the budget is developed. We do a budget every two years. So two and a half years ago, things looked a lot different than they were this year. I've been on the board since 2019, and we're never really quite sure where we fit into that process. I think all of us are hungry, and we want in. So if there's a way that we can formalize a process where we can come to you and verbalize things like that that we're seeing, I think we would like that.
I like that idea very much. And what would that look like, I guess, Kyle or Nick? Like, how could we, how could we go through a process of like, the parks board saying, here is what we would like to see? And then we decide if we resource it or not?
I think it's a, it's a broader conversation about, then, what are all of the inputs that you would want to hear, right? I think we can all acknowledge that there's a fixed amount of resources and revenues for the city and operations. So the parks board does have a voice through the Parks Department. And so some of the feedback that, that Nick and his team are hearing from the parks board help inform what comes forward for consideration. And that informs what the council receives. Looking at the, the city code really is what defines what we would look for in terms of what the powers and the duties of the parks board is. And in Section 2.44.040, ITMA, it talks about the board shall advise the city council regarding the expansion and operation of the city parks and recreation facilities and programs, but shall have no administrative or supervisory power. So essentially saying, you know, they're not going to run the parks, but they can certainly talk to you about what their observations are. I think a lot of that, like, what, what we're hearing, and I think, you know, that purpose and function of what, what people are looking for, the pros plan is a big part of that. Of, that's laying out the strategic element of what is the future of parks and recreation for the city of Bothell to look like. And then there's, that's where we take that from a professional staff standpoint and do our best to map out. And then how do we build that over time? How do we look at things within the resources available and the overall priorities of what the city has? And then I think for the parks board, too, there's that step of if we're, if, certainly, there's always the opportunity to speak into, if there'd be something in a, in an ideal world, if it would look different, or if maybe the, again, they had, had advice for the, for the council that would look different. If, that's certainly a voice that the council can always consider. But it is always the, how do we put it in context? I think the pros plan is a big piece of how to put it in context, because again, that's, that's what breaks things out of the, the two-year look and puts them into the longer look. Similar with the capital facilities plan process. I think that's, as the chair noted, the change, that's something that the council may want to revisit in two years, too, is that, that in the past, there had been the subcommittee of council members, along with a representative of the Parks and Recreation Board and a representative of the city's planning commission, that looked at the capital facilities plan. And so there was, that gave that representative from the parks board an opportunity to hear from their members, bring it to that. And it informed the- from their members, bring it to that, and it, it informed the, the CFP. That happened. As you may recall, the city's finance director went and met with the Parks Board at one of their regular meetings, but it looked different. So if, if that could be fine, too, and I think that's another opportunity that the council may want to, to wish to do. And I know in our, in our most recent check-ins, we talked a little bit about feedback of any process changes you'd want to see from the budget. Maybe that's something we pick back up in March when we meet.
I'm glad you brought up the CFP. I've been waiting for about 45 minutes to try to find a way to weave it into the conversation in a natural way.
You're welcome.
You opened the door there. I was curious, from the Parks perspective, we did change up the process. Instead of having one Parks Board member be part of a small group with council, we really let you all kind of give feedback on that. How did that go? Was that good? Could we do it differently next time we do it to make it better? Did you all enjoy being a part of that process rather than sending one representative? Or would you prefer it to be a smaller group with one representative speaking on behalf of the Parks Board?
I guess I could say, coming from, you know, I'm only 19, I've never seen anything like that giant document ever. And it, at least, at least for the youth positions, I think it was a really interesting learning experience, and, you know, that's, that's always appreciated. So I, I found it very interesting. I felt it definitely gave me a more holistic understanding of what we're doing and why. So I would, I would be in full support of just keeping it, keeping it open, keeping it open to the whole board. Other than that, I don't really have any critiques.
Want to push the button correctly, is to have it as the whole board versus a smaller, one person. Because for me, I'm a learner, and the ideas that come from people that have experience at different posts make me think differently to ask different questions that I think help build that from a knowledge base.
I too was excited to talk about the capital facilities plan. Is that something that you review on a regular basis? Does it come up in your meetings? Okay, so then you know what, like, the current projects are and sort of what the, like, planning horizon looks like. And then, and what, really what we're talking about now is, like, as things fall off the CFP, like, how do you get new things onto the CFP? And, and I do think that it makes sense to me, like, if, if I were, I'm going to try to put myself in your shoes, if I were on the Parks Board, I would love to have that presentation come to the Parks Board so that the representative who comes to the committee at least heard from the Parks Board and can take that up. And, oh, we have a time. Okay. Sorry, I was like, what are you communicating? But yeah, so I, I think that if in the future you have the opportunity to have, like, the CFP brought to the whole Parks Board so that that one representative on the committee can really represent what's, what's coming from the, the whole body. Thank you.
If I might, I do want to say that this staff, incredible, very few, but they're, they're amazing. They do a really good job of connecting the dots with the capital facilities plan, with the comprehensive plan, with the discussion that the council has around stuff. We do, we do get regular reports back, and Nick and the rest of his staff do a good job of, of keeping that. We, of course, want to see feedback as we give input, that it, that it's getting to the council and the, and, and so that there's a back and forth. I support having the Park Board as, as, as involved as possible, and if it's a whole group or if it's just a couple people, that's fine. It's, it's, the method is, is going to be evaluated by the results. And so if we are feeling comfortable, and we do, we are feeling comfortable about the staff's efforts to, to keep us involved and, and see the whole picture. We know how difficult your job is. You're hearing from the Park Board, and, you know, then you're going to hear from the police and the fire and the, everything. It's very difficult. You have to balance, and, and that's one of the things I'm hearing in this meeting is looking at trying to balance competing interests. And no, we don't have a off-track bike park yet, but we are, if you look at the projects that we have going for us, look at that Park at Bothell Landing design that's coming for you pretty soon. It's got lots of stuff in there that is going to be so exciting to the community. And I agree that we've got to look at a lot of, we have a lot of competing interests. And, and the balance is going to be hard, but it's going to be fun, too. So I'm looking forward to that. I know the staff is, too.
All right, we've got about 10 minutes left, and I, did you have something you wanted to say, Maggie? Why don't, why don't you go? You were just reaching for it, and I want to hear what you want to say.
One thing that would be helpful is sometimes we give recommendations or we talk about things, and then I'll see it come up in a city council meeting. I'm like, "Oh, they heard, like, this, this is taking action," and that's awesome. But 95% of the time, we talk and make our recommendation, and it kind of goes into the air, and you don't really see the impact of, kind of, the recommendation, or are you on the right track? Are you giving helpful information? Are you not giving helpful information? And so I think if there's any way to have better, like, feedback loop of, like, what, you know, if we talk about something, well, what is me, your answers earlier were extremely helpful for how I can then be helpful. And just continuing that, how can we continue that dialogue of, like, we're giving you the information that's actually helpful for you to make the decisions you need to make?
Thank you. That actually ties in with where I was going and kind of where I would like to finish up. I want to circle back to you, Whitney, because you asked a question that I think there was a question kind of underneath. You're like, "How can we do this in the budget?" And the answer was kind of like, "Well, we have all of the plans." And when I was in the Parks Board, I was like, "How many plans does something have to get on before it gets done? Like, how many plans do we have?" Yeah, yeah. Nick, Nick can confirm. I've never been the most patient person. So Whitney, how, where do you feel you need more of a voice, I guess, is what I would ask you? And like, the current systems we have aren't, you don't feel are adequate for that, because that's the vibe I was getting from your question.
I think it goes back to, like, the rules and responsibilities of the board and in our communication, which is what Maggie said. Staff does do a fantastic job of laying out all of the, the plans and the priorities, like the CFP plan. I remember distinctly asking, like, "Where did these projects come from? How are they ranked?" And give a really great backstory and context for how that's put together. I guess what I'm saying is, when we then give feedback, how exactly is that being communicated through? Sometimes I come and I give quarterly reports or things like that. Is that an effective way to communicate those priorities and opinions that we may have about the budget or the CFP to you? I'm just trying to make sure that, that there's, the appropriate dialogue is going through and you're, and that we're being heard in these different processes. And it's always been unclear to me, especially around the budget, not necessarily CFP, but the budget, you know, like, how do you want to hear from us in a way that's different than public comment, obviously?
Well, your updates are very appreciated, and we would encourage you to continue those. It comes down to, usually in our agenda packet, we have, like, there's, it kind of lays out, like, what the, what the topic is, and there's usually a, a section on recommendations from the advisory body. And so we look, like, you can look to staff to make sure that your recommendations are represented in our agenda item, because then that comes to us. And then in their presentations, they often will reference the recommendations from the advisory body, too. We, that happens a lot for us with Planning Commission, and it might be that we need to make that more formal or, like, or make it clear that your recommendations get synthesized by staff into our agenda item, and it comes to us that way.
I think the other thing is, the Planning Commission is often, we are, we are then voting on some sort of regulation to amend the city code. We aren't amending the city code to spend money on a park. So it comes through more as the feedback informs the CFP, informs what we end up adopting as the PROS Plan. And it's a little bit less easy to track, in my mind. Having been on the Planning Commission, we, we, when we make our recommendation, there's parts where you can, like, wordsmith, and I feel like that's not, there's not an equivalent so much for that. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but like, it's, it's both maybe sometimes in the 100 to 500 pages we get to read before the meeting. And then it, 500 is like budget, like, it's not, you know? And then it's also in these plans, and I can see how that's disconnected. And I do not want to give you more work as the chair, but I think the, maybe just something like sharing the minutes that would summarize that would, would help us get more tangible recommendations that don't go through that funnel. I know that we have also, I think everyone in council has talked about watching board and commission meetings on double speed to try and catch up, and we now, I think we're in the process of starting to record all of our meetings. There, I haven't seen...
That already happens, yes.
Okay. Because it was just planning and shorelines. I don't know how those two were picked, but now we, we've, we've asked for that. So that's still us taking the time to go watch it, and of course, it kind of comes, it's funny, at double speed, let's just be real. But yeah, that, there's less, I think, of a, like, a flow chart of how it gets from you to us when it's not coming through as a code amendment or just a, something that changes the Bothell municipal code. I'm going to pick on Nicholas, because I haven't heard from you, and I was going to pick on Ben, too, but then he spoke up because he got excited about the CFP.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited. I mean, when I served, when I, years, you know, a couple of years ago, when I decided to throw my name in the hat here, I have a long background in parks, and, and I, I want to advocate for Nick and the staff and maintain what we have. Many of the things we spoke about here, not leaving the smaller neighborhood parks behind, that's near and dear to my heart. Another thing that came up, and Maggie really did some good work on that, how do you get those voices that you don't hear? So, you know, we need to be the eyes and ears of the Park Department and try to share that with you. You know, you, you do your survey, you get the same 200 people. I think you said that. And, and how do you reach out and get those, those voices that you don't hear, you know? And like, we did the tabling event at the park at Bothell Landing, and you get just random people going by, and we were able to capture them, and you get those, get those voices that you don't, don't normally hear, the, the, you know, the people that get, stay involved all the time. You get the ones that use the parks, but, you know, you don't know what their priorities are. So, there you go. I, I'm a big advocate for maintaining what we have, and, you know, we, we had the budget downturn. I, I know we mothballed parks. You know, my kids were both born here, growing up, they're both out of the house now, and it hurts to see that. So I would want to advocate for where can we cut a little more on everything, but keep this going, you know, keep that park going. There you go.
I appreciate it. Thanks for being game. I, I didn't want you to, to leave and not have had a chance to...
I appreciate...
I was gonna, I was gonna do that next. Now, we have also haven't heard from the deputy mayor. We hear from him a lot, though. Rami, how you doing? You got anything to say?
The conversation's going very well. Thank you all. I really appreciate this discussion. Hopefully, it's the first of many. I know you can't fit everything into an hour and 15 minutes. Hi, so, yeah, thank you all. I don't have anything else to add.
All right, I have one more question that I'm going to ask before you're, okay? Like, we all also love our staff, and we all also think we have great parks. And like, independently of all of that, is there anything that's gone unsaid that we could be doing better? That, like, we could, not, not necessarily them, but like, in terms of our communication, like, like, is there anything that you guys have been like, "Oh, I'm not sure if I should say that thing. Is it going to piss them off?" Like, it's not. Like, we, like, please say that thing if that thing exists.
You can email that thing, too. Like, I, this is, this is a lot of pressure. And you're all residents, right? So we also represent you, and it is okay to reach out and be like, "Hey, can we grab coffee?" Or whatever it is, like, we're happy to do that.
Totally. Like, and, and if there's anything you want to communicate to us, like, write a letter, like, as the Parks Board. Like, like, staff will include it in the packet. Like, if there's a particular issue coming up and you guys want to have a voice on it, like, feel more than free to do that. So, and, and also feel free to reach out to us. Like, I know a lot of you have my phone number. If you don't, we're going to take a little break after this, and I'm happy to give it to you. Like, just, just, we, we want to know, and we want more communication, and I've really appreciated this discussion tonight. And I think if I, did you have one more thing to say? Is it fast?
It's a question, and it is a yes or no question.
Kyle's gonna hurt me if I let this go too much longer.
It can be fast. Is there a list of all of the parks in Bothell that is sorted by last update?
So, yeah, if you go to our website, you will see a pretty robust, you know, coverage of all of our parks. It, it's a constant process. We're always updating things. So does that kind of get to your question, or what, what, what am I missing?
Yeah, sure, there's lists of parks, but I mean, like, for example, Cedar Grove is going to quickly become at, like, the top of the list of having been most recently updated, or the bottom of the list, depending on what. Like, I just want to see, like, where, for example, Conifer View 4, does anybody know where that is? Okay?
They all took a tour.
Yeah, yeah. Like, I don't know if you got to that park in, like, specifically, though. Like, I'd just love to know, you know, when was it last updated? And where, how does that compare to the one that was updated just before? Or is, like, what has been updated more in the past than Conifer View 4 is an example of how I would love to see that list. I think the CFP kind of does that, but it doesn't get all the parks on there. It kind of shows Centennial Park is due for an update at some point in the next seven years, like, but we only get that kind of seven-year horizon for it. So I'd be curious to, to get, like, a master list of all of the parks and then, you know, put the year it was last updated so that we could see how long has it been for some of our parks and what kind of maintenance is needed or updating is needed and at what kind of timeframe? Because they all have, like, usable lifespans, right? I was really surprised to hear that Bothell Landing made it to the end of its usable lifespan, because I was like, "It looks so new and clean and, like, great." And my kids played on it growing up, and it was like, "Wow, it's getting updated so fast." And I'm, I wonder about some of our other parks and how that compares to, to their planning horizons, because every park has, kind of, has a planning horizon, right? That's, that's my question.
So no and yes, we will work on it. There's not quite the, the level of detail that you've asked for, but we will work on that. Awesome. And again, just thank you guys for coming out and having a conversation with us tonight. I've had people, like, messaging me for the last 15 minutes, being like, "You're over time," but we were having such a good conversation that I didn't want to just be like, "And time?" So my apologies to all of those people, but thank you guys for coming out, and I'm looking forward to doing this again and seeing what comes out of this meeting.
And as we wrap up, I just want to thank Nick and the operations team.
Yeah.
For, for all of us that engage in the parks on a daily basis, we often go there to see them. They're very helpful. We have good talks, and just want to acknowledge the operations team and the hard work that they do.
Awesome. Thanks so much. And we're going to break until 8 o'clock. It is 7:48. We have 12 minutes. Welcome back, everyone. Next up, we have reports, which we're not used to getting two hours into the meeting, but here we are, and we're going to kick it over to the city manager.
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, it's, it's working. It's working. Thank you. We do have two reports tonight, both of them from staff. The first one is an update on the Behavioral Health Services Request for Proposals and Opioid Settlement Spending Strategies. This is a discussion that has, has started in the Human Services Subcommittee realm and is coming to the full council for an update. Here, joining us tonight is our Assistant City Manager, Becky Range, and our Human Services Coordinator, Anand Manthiragada, is going to lead the conversation. Anand?
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. My name is Anand Manthiragada, and we, I'm the Human Services Coordinator for our city, and we are here today to provide a brief update on the upcoming Behavioral Health Services RFP and our proposed opioid settlement spending strategies. We are not requiring or requesting any action from council today. Staff is utilizing our time just to provide an update. time just to provide an update. In 2023, the city council approved the Human Services Needs Assessment Project and the results of the assessment showed that mental and behavioral health services were ranked one of the biggest gaps in our community. During last year's budget discussions, city council directed staff to explore options and study potential avenues of how to address these gaps. And as a result, the, as a result, the staff developed an mental, be, mental and behavioral health RFP where we may allocate funding up to $500,000. The funding will be a blend of, uh, both general funds as well as the opioid settlement funds. The period of performance for the contract will be from June 2025 to December 2026 and the scope of work will include behavioral health services which entail clinical assessments, referrals, counseling, along with case management. We will also be procuring for a mini-community resource center where community members can walk in and learn more about the resources that are available to them. And lastly, we'll also be looking for a benefits navigator that can connect our community members to program services and any sort of assistance that they may need. Next, we have an update on our opioid spending strategy. The city of Bothell is due to receive around $3.1 million over the course of 17 years. The funding is restricted where the Washington State has provided a list of approved uses. While researching our funding strategies, we looked at what other cities have done so far, uh, the city of Everett, for example, has launched an emergency mobile opioid team program, uh, the city of Kirkland is providing street-level outreach to residents experiencing homelessness. The city of Redmond has purchased handheld narcotics analyzers for their PD. Uh, council, you may also notice that we receive slightly higher funding from other cities and we believe that a part of the reason could be, uh, is that we belong in both King and Snohomish Counties, so we're getting settlement dollars from both the counties. Lastly, we developed our opioid settlement strategies by collaborating with our finance team, our police department, as well as our community court. Our strategy focuses on connecting people who need help to the help that they need and this is to, through the potential programs and services in the behavioral health contract along with future human services grants program. Secondly, supporting first responders, this is through education of law enforcement on how, on best practices while dealing with substances, along with purchasing handheld analyzers, uh, addressing the needs of criminal justice-involved persons through recovery support services and purchasing equipment and supplies. Lastly, we also plan to partner with Uda Bothell Cascadia College and the North Shore School District on raising awareness on campus, uh, through trainings, seminars and, um, to, to training, trainings and seminars. That concludes our presentation, no action is requested tonight, staff is providing an update on the upcoming Behavioral Health Services RFP and the opioid settlement fund spending strategy. We will welcome any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Raldricks.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, uh, for bringing this to us, for the presentation. And especially for kind of explaining, you know, how is it that we got more funding than Kirkland? Also, thank you for those who are responsible for making sure that we have that funding. And when it comes to the strategy, I think all of this makes sense, um, though I am miss- I'm missing North Shore School District on here as a potential partner. I think you guys are already planning on and working with North Shore to address misuse and prevention, um, but I just would love to see them called out here and included as well.
Yes, uh, we've already reached out to the school district and they're on board for whenever we begin our partnership with them.
Councilmember, Councilmember Dodd?
I, I was gonna share one thing that I kind of learned on a recent visit to Inglemore High School, um, I didn't want to go back to my day job as quickly as I was going to, so I made conversation with the campus safety supervisor in the parking lot and, um, I had a little more time to kill. And, um, what was interesting to me was talking to the safety supervisor about their on-campus prevention is basically having adults that they know that, that students can go to when there is a concern or a, a situation. So, uh, part of preventing misuse, I, I think raising awareness is important, right? Like, people don't always understand that, um, an illegal substance, like, you try it once and your life is changing course. I think understanding more and maybe a future update or just a briefing or whatever, how we can, the school district, I think, has a really interesting program in place with having those safety supervisors on campus and having just different networks of adults. I know there are elementary and middle and junior high schools with, there's school counselors, there's school therapists on some sites, there's, um, psychologists, like, just understanding the scope of what the school district's doing would be really helpful because I feel like I'm learning new stuff all the time as a parent of a student in the district. Um, and this was just volunteering to talk to a civics class, not being a parent, but, um, it's, I would love to learn more about that and how we can play a part in that. And also $3 million sounds like a lot of money, but I'm sure once we talk about all the schools, we're getting to where it's not as much as it sounds like, so, thank you.
Councilmember Curd?
Thanks, thanks for the presentation, really, um, good to hear that we're putting, we have an idea for where the money should go. I also wanted a quick clarification, is the, um, foreseen dispersment of the funds going to be like an equal amount every year for the next 17 years? Or is it, um, is it kind of differently distributed, more upfront, less later?
I've looked at the King County Opioid Abatement Council's website and they've shared that we've already received around 500,000 and it's, the future payments, it's going to be around $180,000 per year.
Okay, that's good information, yeah, thank you. One comment that I have is as we prepare information for first responders, um, on dealing with substances, I think of other departments in the city that there might be some intersection and some overlap with, people who, um, as part of their daily job may encounter substances as well. So I'm hopeful that we broadly construe the educational, um, um, stuff that we're developing, um, just for all city staff who might, um, see, see those impacts.
Councilmember Zornz?
Real quickly, thank you for this comprehensive work, um, I really appreciate the scope, I think it hits the major areas. And, um, I sat there with my little calculator and did the math and it was like 182,000, which sounds great right now, but, you know, 17 years from now, the buying power is probably going to be a little less, but, you know, it's a great, it's a great start and we know where we're going with it and, um, I just want to thank you again for the work you've put into this.
Councilmember Raldricks?
If anybody else wants to speak before me, since I'm coming back for a second round, that, um, I'm happy to accommodate, um, but if not, then I also wanted, I see Deputy Mayor's hand, how about we go to him first? Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, and it's okay, Councilmember Raldricks, uh, I could, could have waited, but since you let me go, I will go. I, uh, a question I have, uh, uh, thank you, Anand, for this, uh, very helpful presentation. I had a similar question to Councilmember, uh, Curd and, uh, Zornz about the amounts. The question I have is, so this one said, it's the Behavioral Health Services RFP, uh, which will incorporate, will have some of that money that we already got and we will get in the future for the opioid settlement and some general fund, but then the other things that are mentioned about, uh, the set of, the spending strategies that you, you hit on briefly, like, can you explain how those two things intersect, Behavioral Health RFP and spending strategies on the opioid settlement funds?
Yes, the Behavioral Health RFP is a part of the spending strategy, the Behavioral Health RFP will work to address the needs of community members that have opioid use disorder or broadly at the risk of opioid use disorder, so we are hoping that the, the RFP will feed into our overall spending strategy.
Is that, um, I mean, Center for Health Services, I mean, is it similar to what we have today or is that going to be something new in addition to what we have today?
It is similar, but what we have today also includes family support services which are, which the opioid, which the, uh, which the spending strategy will not include. There is some overlap, but it's not the one is to one ratio.
Okay, so we will have two behavioral health programs then, that overlap, but cover two different things.
The current behavioral health pro, uh, contract ends in June and then the one that's going to come, it's going to start in June, so we're trying to make sure that our community members don't lose any coverage, so as this one ends.
I see.
Uh, then the, we're working to make sure that the next one will begin around the same time.
Okay, okay, so we are making more explicit, or, uh, to, to meet the requirements of the settlement, we are making more explicit that we're going to be expanding coverage, I guess, so to speak? Is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't, I can't, I can't see, uh, your, okay, that, that's all I have, thank you.
I have a quick question, and I just want to put a really fine point on that. So we are going to be adding the services with the opioid restriction, we're not going to be removing services that already exist in the current contract?
The current contract is in general for anyone who's with mental health conditions, whereas with the upcoming behavioral health contract, we are looking at community members who have mental health conditions, who are also at risk of opioid use disorder or who may already have opioid use disorder.
So if we, if we have a community member that has a behavioral health issue that isn't comorbid with an opioid use disorder, are we still going to be able to serve them?
Yes.
Okay, cool, I just want to make sure we're not, we're not sacrificing one thing to do this other thing, that this is an extra and, because obviously the settlement isn't going to cover the entire cost, so, perfect. Councilmember Raldricks?
Yeah, I think it's really important to, um, to make that distinction, recognize that, uh, there is the effort to, to extend the Behavioral Health RFP and add opioid services in response to the, um, to, to that work and that the funds, in some cases, will work together to, to provide service to community members, but not all community members will be served by both. So I appreciate that. I, I also, as I reflected on, um, the, what Councilmember Dodd said with, uh, schools, I am reminded of, uh, private schools that exist within communities who are often underserved when it comes to like public health type and related issues. A lot of times, uh, public schools don't necessarily have a special education funding or access to services or, um, can, they aren't necessarily equipped to respond to, um, to, you know, crisis-type events. And so I would also suggest when partnering with schools to include private schools, invite them, make sure that we outreach to them, invite them to attend the opioid, you know, kind of, community education so that they can maybe come on to, you know, invite students so that they can attend at a public education or a public institution of some kind. I probably shouldn't ta- sell, tell this joke, but the joke in my private high school growing up was that, um, we didn't do, we didn't have better drugs, we did more drugs. I was not a drug user, but that was the joke at the school. So I think that there is a risk of, of losing kids who are educated in private settings if we don't outreach to them, so, thanks for letting me say it.
Thank you for the presentation, I think we're good.
All right, the next update, uh, Mayor, is before you, um, wanted to provide a brief update on the Lot EF&amp;G temporary activation, um, putting some context behind what you can visibly see as you drive by the site. So just as a reminder, uh, it was last year in March of 2024 when the council did give staff direction to move forward with planning a phased implementation for the temporary activation of Lot EF&amp;G. And then in September, we were back to you, um, with more information and got the, the final go-ahead to move forward with that work. Um, I will just note that when we talk about temporary activation, we are still talking about a six to eight-year timeframe, um, that site, uh, for anyone who's newly following along, is still undergoing some environmental remediation. So there are, the, the thesis of the question that we were being asked was, is there something we can do to make use of that space more than, um, as a, as a parking lot, um, for that period of time while the remediation still goes forward? And the answer is yes, so we'll be talking about that tonight. I want to provide then an update, instead of going over what's going to happen in the next year, because the good news is, is there's not that much left. Um, I want to provide you an update in three parts, one is what's happening this week, what's coming in the next month, and then what to expect for Phase Two. Again, council gave direction for a phased approach and the staff has broken it into two phases. So for starting off with what's happening this week, we're getting really close to the end of Phase One. Work is very much underway for a temporary activation of Lot EF&amp;G. You've probably watched over the last month and a half as that site was cleared and activity has been taking place. What I do want to note is that the work that's going on, um, while it's, it'll be seemingly the smaller footprint of the project, um, it's the most time and resources intensive step, because it is really what's putting together the infrastructure so that individuals can use and, um, en- enjoy the space. So essentially, uh, as I talked to Ishish earlier today, 90% of the effort, um, of the overall activation is taking place in this first phase, so it's a, it's a pretty heavy lift. So some of the things that you'll, you're about to see and are actually already, uh, developed, there are foundations that are in place for four additional pop shops, the shops themselves have been constructed, they'll be coming in on trucks, so it's not, uh, that's not a phase that we have to do of watching them come up from the studs, they'll be delivered very soon after some inspection. Um, there's also work underway to create an enclosure for portable restrooms on the site, as well as work for two food truck pads, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. Um, the big thing that's happening this week is completion of a pedestrian pathway that will, uh, basically provide about a 90-degree angle of connecting on the corner, uh, closest to City Hall here. That construction, uh, of the pathway is nearly complete, it's been delayed probably about a week, it was, we, it would have been something we were anticipating completion, like maybe even tomorrow, um, I think on the outside edge, it's now the 12th because we don't want to jinx weather, but when we had snow cover and, um, some very heavy rains in the last week, it slowed things down for the, for the workers who are building it. The path is really important because it is what makes it possible for all visitors to enjoy the area and meets the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Uh, and like I said, the, the work is scheduled to be completed no later than March 12th, we hope to beat that. Following completion of the path, the next final steps will be a final grading of the site, so as the bigger, heavy equipment leaves, making sure that everything's ready for future phases. And then also in this early phase, there will be an installation of outdoor tables, chairs, umbrellas for shade and planters to help beautify the space. So then, within the next month, once that is in place, uh, staff's opening up an application window for the additional pop shops, that'll actually be getting posted here, um, on the 6th, so your next community, uh, engagement, uh, slide will have the opportunity to apply to that. Uh, we're looking at a 30-day window again and this will be for an additional two-year program for, uh, for business owners to consider. The application window, like I say, would be 30 days and during that time, the city will be offering two optional, you don't have to do them to apply, but two optional workshops, uh, for those interested in operating a business that will focus on, uh, one of the workshops is developing a business plan and then, um, the other is more around refining their business idea to help create a strong application. So again, those will, um, be posted and advertised and completed before the application window is closed and the goal is to have those, uh, vendors selected by mid-April. Also, within that, and as we get into Phase Two, um, they're closer to Phase Two, but, but this will be ready, is that, once the, uh, application period is, is substantially complete for the pop shops, there will also be a, uh, a, a program advertised for a food truck incubator program, similar to how the pop shops have given small businesses opportunities to, uh, try things out at a very, uh, small businesses opportunities to, uh, try things out at a very, uh, very low rate of, um, of, of operation. So, uh, what, what is being envisioned here is a business incubator program. So it wouldn't require a food truck per se, but more of a mobile operation of food service, um, that would be set up and torn down, um, on a daily basis. What's kind of exciting about this too is that with the mobility that's involved with mobile food, uh, providers, is that unlike the pop shops of where we know how many we have and then therefore how many providers will be there, we're going to see what the application process looks like, how many are there, and then also be able to manage a schedule so that, um, as, uh, business gets established, if they want to start trying out serving somewhere else or not being, um, on site certain days of the week, we don't have to mandate that. They can, um, let us know when they're going to be there and try and then build a schedule where both pads would be in operation, um, when, when we're looking for it. So that's a exciting opportunity to get more businesses launched here in Bothell. And, and yeah, grow for future use. So that's, some of the finding, finishing touches are being put on that application process, but we'll be getting ready to put that out there. So then looking forward, uh, with, for phase two, as I mentioned, if 90% is in phase one, what's the remaining 10%? So some of the site enhancement enhancements that'll come, um, afterwards that are really, they're going to take a matter of weeks. So, um, this is not a, a long, long process. But, uh, built into the site, we want to have some education efforts to help communicate to the community of what's happening at the site, including the environmental remediation, what the city's responsibility they took on to, uh, try and improve downtown, uh, and the overall remediation plans. There will also be installation of ways for people to get involved. So a P patch with community planter boxes is part of the design, planting of native grasses and wildflowers to help beautify the space. And then addition of shade sales and string lights to provide for better comfort atmosphere for people to gather there. One of the concepts that came through in our engagement with the community, an, uh, an area for community art in partnership with the Arts Commission, of having, um, art installations on the site, additional seating. And then, um, the, the piece that I know that I'm personally really excited about is there will also be information on site for individuals that are part of community organizations or groups of how they can then make use of the site. So being able to let groups activate the site, whether it be for their own use of having, um, like a, a gathering, but also, you know, and fundraisers and how to engage with the community if they're looking to bring people in to, um, to get feedback or do some sort of community facing event. So all of that will be part of the site. We expect, again, phase two will be completed with a shorter timeframe, like in the matter, matter of weeks, and we'll keep you updated as soon as we know more. So that concludes the update for tonight of what's, what's happening. Again, we're really close to having some more public steps seen, including that, uh, the pop shop application period. And we're really excited to see some of the physical changes really start to bloom in the weeks ahead. With that, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions or we'll follow up as needed.
Deputy Mayor, you didn't raise your hand, but I, I know this is near and dear to your heart.
Yeah, it is, it is. And it's exciting that we're almost there. It's, uh, more than, it's a little over a year, you know, from the time we, as a council, decided we want to do something with it and then the time it, uh, and then launch date. I just wanted to clarify on the, uh, the launch date is, uh, like sometime in April? Like is there a, is that, did I hear that correctly?
That's correct. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And yeah, the, the overall flow of this is the application period for the pop shops will be, um, coming out, uh, tentatively this Thursday. Work stop sessions at the end of this month, and then the window will close and hoping to have the selection of the pop shops by mid-April.
Are we going to be like, uh, cutting the virtual ribbon? You know, like opening up for public use, like for people to start using it and the shops to be open and everything? Is that mid-April or is that later?
Correct, yeah, that is, that is what we're, we're aiming for. And again, we will, uh, we will make sure to do a, a community event to celebrate that. And, um, again, maybe the second phase may not all be done at that point or will not be done at that point, but the workability of, uh, of having the initial space, including that seating area that I mentioned, um, it'll have some temporary shading before the sales are installed. And maybe that's not just shading, that might be some weather protectant. But, uh, yeah, so there'll be umbrellas and, uh, places to gather, uh, already built into it in that first phase, and then it'll just get better from there.
Oh, that's, that's awesome. Good, uh, you know, uh, it will be a good, uh, uh, just in time for the weather gets nicer. I don't know if it'll ever get nice, but nicer ER. So, uh, yeah, and thank you for that. I have a, one more question, if that's okay with everybody. So the survey, we had the, a survey that we did and we had the, the options and it was the most engaged survey, like probably in the history of surveys in the city of Bothell. Are we gonna start using, looking at that again and just making sure that we are, you know, doing something that's like for, in phase two or three or whatever, that will help? Because we are talking about an eight year horizon, you know? So is there something we can do, more we can do using the results from that survey at some point in the near future?
Yeah, the, the results of the, um, it, it was, uh, the, there was four concepts that were provided to the community and then they were asked to respond to, um, what they liked and what they didn't like about each concept. And those, those likes helped then inform what the design of this activation would be. So, um, there are elements from, um, from those designs that then are, that is what informed what this looks like in terms of, you may recall, like two of the designs, one was Bothell's front yard, then one was more evocative of a backyard. So is it, uh, it, it, the equivalent of sitting on your front porch? Or is it in the backyard where there would be swings and that sort of a thing? So that, that feedback, there was the art gallery, so that concept making it in. There was the place to gather to eat, and so that's what informed the food pads. There were, there was, uh, uh, feedback from the community about like with the pop shops of having more, um, more shops to, to gather in. If four is great, we wanted more than that to incentivize coming to this location. So those, those elements were, uh, and the feedback of those elements is what informed the design.
Uh, thank you. Let's, uh, make sure that, uh, when we are doing the opening to, I think, make that explicit, show, demonstrate that we are listening and we are doing something that, that's not going to be a permanent use of the land, because we know eventually we're going to have to decide what to do with this land once remediation is done.
Absolutely.
I, I.
Go ahead.
I love the idea of doing the food incubator thing to keep those pads busy all the time. People want to experiment and they don't know if it's going to work for them. I, I mean entrepreneurs, they want to experiment with stuff. And we, they don't want to get, you know, um, 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 in a, they don't want to go into a permanent spot and be stuck there for a long time when they know it's not going to work from like the first month, you know? So that's a great, great idea. So thank you. I'm looking forward to it. One more month?
We're gonna get there. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And I think a speaking opportunity at the opening is, uh, has your name on it for sure. And yeah, thank you for the.
No, that's not what I'm.
It's too late. It's, it's in the minutes.
I volunteer bend.
It's in the minutes. You can't escape.
If we have to take a vote, we will, Deputy Mayor.
But I, I do, I do appreciate the reminder of tying back to, uh, pointing back to the things that the community told us and how this is responsive to that. And also, um, really to highlight too, again, the education on the site of what's happening. I think you're absolutely right. It's important to explain why this is temporary. I think there will be a, a different use, but, um, as one of the things that we've talked about, it's also a great opportunity to see how people, um, use this space and what ideas then can be incorporated throughout the community in other ways.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Uh, thank you for the presentation. I am missing our, uh, deputy city manager tonight. Usually we'd be hearing these updates from Tony. But, uh, you, you did great, city manager. Thank you. This is really exciting. He'll do. We appreciate Kyle and everything he does. So this is just an exciting update. It's not often we get a, you know, this week, next week, next month kind of update. And so it really is moving along. So I, I kind of scoped it out the other day and it, yes, things are happening, but it sounds like next week is going to be when it looks like some stuff really happened. So I'm looking forward to seeing that, although we won't be here. We'll be in DC. So in two weeks, I will see what it looks like. I appreciate the education component. Is that going to be like in the, like kind of marquee sign? I don't know if that's the word for it, but like kind of signs out? Or how is that intended to take place?
Yeah, there will be, the, the communication elements will be signage based. And then, yeah, as Ashish was briefing me on this earlier today, and the, there will be a split rail fence that surrounds the entire property, really helps define the area of what is the lot versus what is the next site over and that sort of a thing. And along, uh, in specified areas of the, of the property, there will be different, um, elements of signage. And again, the two, the two major themes of that signage is around what's, what's happening at the site, what makes it temporary and what, what is the city doing? And then also the activation opportunities so that groups can get a spark of an idea of, hey, we should, we should bring our team down here.
So if, uh, future Irish dancers wanted to make an appearance down there, they could.
I, I hope we're all available.
We did that a couple of years ago. Irish dancers performed right out front during a council meeting, unfortunately. Because that just happened to be the day that St. Patrick's Day fell on. But yeah, it's, I really, I really like that, especially the wildflowers. I'm excited to see those. So, thank you. Thank you to everybody on the team, Tony especially, for, for working with the contractors and, and bringing not just like one vision to life, but like kind of creating a vision based on so many ideas that were coming from our community. I think this is becoming more than I, I dreamt of. And because it is taking all those, those components together, I'm looking forward to seeing it when it's completed.
Absolutely. And Tony would be quick to point to, um, Ashish Joshi, who joined the city in June. It was really, this is a project that, um, through his, uh, his passion for small business and for connecting with the community, has really been able to, um, to get his arms around too. And, um, I think that, that also the element that he's brought that is appreciated in pretty much every department in the city, because this is, again, this activation is not a one person thing. And Ashish has really brought that, um, that commitment to bringing everyone along with, because there is, there's a lot to this. There's more than, than more than what you would think. And like to even to your point of the things that we'll start seeing of happening. And it's amazing on, on how many steps have to be done and done correctly on a environmentally, you know, sensitive site before the things that we see. And I'm really thankful for the work that's been done to get us here.
All right, thank you very much. We are going to move on to council committee reports, community reports and conversations. And we're running late, so I'm not going to last fair. Okay, Councilmember Zornz?
Quick, quick conversation. It's been a while since I've been able to highlight heroes here in Bothell. And anybody who's on social media saw that the police department showcased Night to Shine, which was almost what, two weeks ago? So, um, our fire department was involved, our police department was involved. I saw a lot of familiar faces of some great staff there. And their heroes, Becca Nistrian, who's organized this, is a hero. And Pastor Russell Coretz, who's been, uh, a major part of putting Night to Shine. I guess Night to Shine is kind of, has international interest here because I heard a report of a family that flies in for this every year to participate. So, um, it's, it's great to see that programming running strong and, uh, really encouraging our young people.
All right. Moving on to projected agenda discussion. Does anybody else have an item they'd like to discuss? If not, I would love to, uh, accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Aldrichs?
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Aldrichs and a second from Councilmember Kerd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. All right, we have a public hearing for state bill 5290, local project review code amendments. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. And yes, coming to the table is Christian Getz, our community, or community development deputy director. And as he pulls his PowerPoint up, um, just the, the quick framing, uh, is a reminder is that in January, the council approved an interim ordinance, uh, related to, um, the state bill fifty, or Senate Bill 5290. And then by state law, when an interim ordinance is passed, council must do, uh, conduct a public hearing within 60 days and tonight satisfies that requirement. With that, I'm going to turn things over to Christian to walk you through a few reminders of what is, uh, part of this action. Christian?
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, uh, mayor, deputy mayor and city council members. Uh, I'll be really brief. We've gone through this before. This is, yes, a procedural public hearing that has to take place for the interim ordinance. Your action tonight is to hold this hearing. It's required within 60 days of the January 7th, uh, interim ordinance approval. An adoption of an ordinance is required within six months, uh, or an extension would have to be, uh, made. So on May 10th of 2023, the legislature passed SB 5290. Much of that went into effect right away. The main element that did not was the, the provisions for timelines. The major themes of the bill, it's streamlined project, uh, submittal and review expectations. It established certain reporting requirements that begin this year for 2024. And it encourages jurisdictions to use best practices in, in implementing, you know, things such as electronic plan review, how we work with, with applicants to make sure we move things along to promote the development of residential housing. All of the, the, the amendments were located within Title 11. It's our administrative chapter within the municipal code. They're very, very discreet, either changing the reference or, or adding a reference to just point to the new state law, so that if that ever changes, we don't have to do anything about this anymore, or removing, uh, the former deadline, uh, within there. So, um, that is all I have. Very, very brief, uh, very surgical amendments within the code. And I can answer any questions. With this, uh, public hearing being concluded, uh, we can bring back an ordinance, uh, at a future meeting. So you can see the, the final language, which we intend to just match what we've already presented.
Councilmember Zornz?
I have a quick question, just for clarification. I think it's on to pa, page 249 of our agenda packet. There's, uh, the need for additional, uh, information, additional studies or modifications to the projects may be undertaken subsequent to the procedural review of the application and shall not preclude a completeness of determination. And as I read further, I hope, I, I hope I'm understanding it correctly, that if a project is done, if there's still questions that arise, it can come back and be, questions can be addressed?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
It's completeness, not correctness, when somebody is applying for an application. We don't say you're, you, you didn't dot this, this I or cross this T.
Perfect.
Or include a correct calculation. We'll review that calculation and it might require corrections. And that's where we get into that review cycle, the back and forth to make sure.
But you're keeping the machine, the movement forward?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. City clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
We do not.
Do we want to ask anybody in the audience? Is there anybody here that's not at work? I don't think so. All right. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing then. Thank you very much, Christian. All right, next up, we have Professional Services Supplement Number Three with WSP USA Incorporated for Bothell Way Northeast Multimodal Improvements Project. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, we do have one item under ordinance and resolutions tonight. As you mentioned, it is Professional Services Agreement. We have just a quick staff framing for this item, but I think before we begin, I'd like to turn things over to Councilmember Kerd, if this works for you for timing.
Okay. I, members of the council will know that this item was slated for the consent agenda, and I worked with the executive team to pull it from consent. I, my husband works for WSP, although not with this specific project, and I have financial interest in the company. And so I wanted to shop the minute financial interests that I have with the company in, with our new ethics team. They determined that there is no conflict of interest. However, I'm still going to be abstaining from a vote tonight, just in the interest of fairness. So wanted to preface that and turn it over to staff.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. And so I will turn things over to our Public Works Director and Lenhart to just do a quick framing of what is included in this agreement.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and Council. So this agreement before you this evening is the third supplement for an agreement with WSP for continued work on the Bothell Way Multimodal Project. This project will improve and widen Bothell Way between Reader and 240th Street Southeast. And the, some of the particular items included in the supplement are, it increases the contract amount by a little over $2.1 million. It includes additional scope for geotechnical analysis for infiltration. It also includes wall and stormwater vault design, right-of-way acquisition services. Those are more of the city bucket. There's also a bucket of services related to community transit improvements along the corridor. And those improvements, any work related to community transit will be reimbursed to the city. There will be a separate inter-local agreement and first a memorandum of understanding that will come to council before any significant expenditures are made on community transit's behalf. So with that, the recommended action is to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to sign Supplement Number Three with WSP USA Inc. for the Bothell Way Northeast Multimodal Improvements Project for the additional amount of $2,169,138. I turn it to you.
Wouldn't anybody like to take this opportunity to say, so moved?
I was going to say that.
Okay, Councilmember Zornz.
I was waiting with bated breath. So moved.
Second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Zornz and a second from Councilmember Dodd to approve the recommended action. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerd?
Abstain.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember Kerd abstaining.
Thank you, City Clerk, and thank you. All right, next up, we have a Board and Commission Recruitment Update. City Manager, or City Clerk already had her mic on.
You know, we, it's a race to the top. So just a quick reminder, our City Clerk gave you a brief update at the beginning of the year before opening the recruitment for boards and commissions. We committed to coming back to council once the application period closed with an update and to help you determine your next steps between now and interviews. With that, City Clerk Laura Hathaway will give you an update on what we know so far. Laura?
Thank you very much. Yeah, application period closed on February 21st. We received 45 applications for the 16 positions that are open on the council-appointed board and commissions. Three of those people have been deemed as they live out of the planning area and are not eligible. So we will be notifying those three people tomorrow, in fact. So we're down to 42 people, and so that updates the numbers a little bit. What we're asking, what my ask is of council this evening is, does council want to appoint a subcommittee to review the applications and make recommendations of who to interview for the full council to interview on March 25th at a special meeting? Or does the council want to interview all 42 applicants? So that's the question before the council. If the council decides to go with the subcommittee process, we will send those applications out to the subcommittee tomorrow, if you make the decision today, this evening. We'll send those out along with the residency maps and ask that the council would then let us know and give us the recommendations to put forth to the full council by March 12th. So that is my update, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for bringing this, putting it all together for us and, and doing the work of, of preparing all of these applications for the next steps. I really did appreciate the process of using the subcommittee last time we did this, and I, I would like to see that go forward. I think, I think I served on it with Councilmember Dodd and Councilmember Kerd. And, and I think that changing that up a little bit would be good, but I'm also willing to, to serve on that subcommittee again. Do I get to nominate people?
I'd like consensus of whether we're going to do the subcommittee or have interviews to the full council of all 42 first, and then we'd ask for...
Councilmember Manke?
I concur with my fellow council member. I thought the subcommittee worked very well, and it was an efficient way to, to narrow down the candidate pool. And I felt like being able to voice if we felt like somebody else should be included that wasn't included worked really well. Last time I felt heard when I had a couple of people that I wanted to add in, so I have no concerns with the, the subcommittee.
Does anybody have concerns with the subcommittee? We're going to assume that everybody is fine with the subcommittee. All right. I too like the subcommittee.
So with that, I would ask if we could have three people named to the subcommittee.
What are...
I think Councilmember Dodd just volunteered herself.
No. I, we're not there yet. What are the date, what's the date range in which this committee needs to meet?
From March 5th through the 12th.
Okay.
And that, that's so that you can submit the names to put forth, so that we can have it for the council agenda packet on March 18th.
That's a tight timeframe, and I don't know who's got free time to do this between now and March 12th.
You guys are in DC.
I've got a six-hour plane, plane ride. This sounds like a conversation, so I'm just going to jump in. I participated last time on the committee, and it did take some time to really read through all the applications. I'm willing to participate again if needed, so I'll put my name in the hat. Yeah.
I didn't do it last time, but I'd be willing to do it this time.
I can meet during the day tomorrow, Thursday or Friday, but then five of us are going to DC over the weekend, so, yeah.
I will not be able to do it during the day. It would have to be an evening for me.
That's why I specified, because I'm happy to do it, but it's, yeah.
Can anybody else do a day or an evening, and that will decide which one of Councilmember Dodd and I participate?
I can do day or evening.
I was so excited when you started with day. What works better for you, day or evening?
Evening.
I graciously concede to the mayor.
All right, so Councilmember Alderks, Councilmember Kerd and myself. Anybody have a problem with that? No, you don't. That's the least formal motion for acclamation ever, I think. But yeah, we can, we can figure it out.
Yeah, and I will send out the applications along with the residency maps to the three of you tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, we have a study session for the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Docket. And we are going to meet down there for a study session. Does any, does anybody need a few minutes?
Can we take a break?
Yes. It's 8:53. We will come back at nine o'clock down there. I was just going to let that go because I was having fun with it, but I think it's probably time to start the meeting back up again. We have the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Docket, and City Manager, I'm going to kick it over to you.
Thanks so much, Mayor. And yes, we do have one item for study session tonight, and as you mentioned, it is about the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Docket. With that, you'll probably recall, you've spent a substantial amount of time over the last two years talking about the comprehensive plan. So I know you're familiar with what it is and what it does. Tonight, to frame the conversation, I'm turning straight to Christian again to, to kick things off.
Thank you. Hello again, everybody. Yes, tonight, no action required. We're seeking, we're providing a briefing on the singular proposed docket item for the year. So this is the, the private amendment request docket. Staff are seeking input and feedback on the applicant request and what the staff has recommended. Based on the discussion this evening, staff can return at a future meeting with a resolution related to next steps. Some general background on the application. Back in, on October 25th of 24, an amendment was submitted in accordance with our procedures, which we allow private amendment requests to be submitted between November 1st and October 31st of any year. It is then placed on the, the docket schedule to be studied that following, within that following calendar year, and determined to move forward. The request submitted is seeking to change the comprehensive land use designation to allow residential uses. Currently, it is within a employment low designation, proposing to shift it to a mixed-use employment, future land use map, flume designation. The comp plan policies around this, it's, you know, currently the employment low designation area is, is providing for low-intensity employment opportunities and supporting non-residential uses. These policies that are in the comp plan identify for principal uses and intensity intended to be low-intensity office, flex uses, or manufacturing. What I'm going to do, I'm going to go through a couple of maps to kind of visually give you, you know, more background on con, and context, elaborating what was within the staff memo. I'm going to look at the comprehensive plan designation map. This is the map that you saw over the fall, over the, kind of, as we developed the preferred alternative and into the final adoption. And then I'm going to touch on the Canyon Park Preferred Designation Map from the 2020 Canyon Park Subarea Plan Update. So the, the designations incorporated various complexities within the, the comprehensive plan map, evaluating the, the countywide planning policies for residential and employment use, which are those, the targets, the residential housing targets, the jobs or employment targets. The preferred alternative shown here balanced that capacity and density by spreading residential units throughout the city. That was when we, we looked at the, is it centers, is it neighborhoods? Let's do the hybrid. That's what we landed on. We increased floor area ratios within mixed-use areas. Those are the, the purple areas, purple or lavender on the, on the map, where we, we did increase those, all while maintaining the employment low designation. That's the areas in, in the lighter blue, so either in North Creek or in, in Canyon Park, that maintained the, the lower intensity uses to, to accommodate those, those employment, employment targets. Switching back, and I know some of you were involved in this back in 2018, 2019, 2020. The Canyon Park Subarea Plan wrapped up in 2020. It was a multi-year event which established the framework and vision for that subarea. The update followed, you know, lengthy and detailed process similar to a comp plan update where it established goals and policies for the subarea. And it included updated zoning, an EIS, and a planned action ordinance. So it was a very in-depth process that, you know, incorporated engagement. It resulted in what's shown here. So this is the Preferred Land Use and Design Designation Map. It did designate sort of those higher-intensity mixed uses located along 527. Those are the oranges, pinks, red, dark orange, that were mixes of residential and commercial positioned along transit lines and spanned from Thrasher's Corner at the north all the way down to the, to the 228th intersection and, and just south of that towards Midtown now. The outer perimeter, which includes the subject property, was designated into two sort of separate lower-intensity uses, the, the purple and then the light purple. So nothing to do with the purple on the comp plan map, but designating it down to a, to a lower-intensity use, with the subject property giving, being given the, the lower of the two. And then these were, these designations were, were maintained through the future land use map that was on the previous slide. So the, the comp plan maintained that consistency with, with the Canyon Park Subarea Map. While not part of the Comprehensive Plan Designation Amendment proposal, it is important to note that the applicant also applied for a site-specific rezone at the same time as the docket application. A site-specific rezone is a quasi-judicial matter and will be processed separately. It just, it's worth noting that rezones rely on the comp plan designation change. So really just want to make sure staff are clear with how we, we analyze this. The Canyon Park Subarea Plan sets forth that future path for maintaining an employment-low designation for the subject property by, by setting up the entire subarea for varying levels of intensity. That designation and intensity approach allowed for the subarea to be designated as a regional growth center by PSRC. And then finally, the, the recently completed comp plan update reaffirmed that employment-focused designation for the subject property while establishing a citywide path that satisfies the residential and jobs targets. So based on, on that staff analysis provided in the memo and then here tonight, you know, we, staff do recommend that the council decline further consideration of the suggested What we're do, what we're looking for tonight is, is input and feedback on our next steps based on the proposal, based on staff's recommendations, so we can come back with, with the resolution for you to guide us on our next steps. With that, here to answer questions.
Did we open the Canyon Park Subarea in the comp plan?
We, I'd say we, we brushed alongside it. I mean, we, we maintained everything within it, except for, you know, making sure that our, our designations, you know, maybe name changed.
Okay.
Where we added the, those mixed-use overlay and...
But we didn't change anything in the subarea in the comp plan? We basically just made sure that what we called things were consistent with what we changed things to in the rest of the city?
Right.
Okay. I, I think two things. I very much want to make sure that we maintain a commercial business district in Bothell. And we also have somebody from our community essentially telling us that under our current zoning designations, what we have is really the only option that we will get. And I would love to see some redevelopment. I am open to the idea of residential in there, but not if we lose commercial. So I would be interested in knowing, like, if there's a path or a way that we could explore, looking maybe not at the exact request, but if there's a way that we could explore trying to accomplish what the applicant is looking for along with our goals and making sure that we don't lose the, you know... strong business district, and maybe we have some housing in the middle of it, and we have a mixed-use area. Would that be, like, would that be an option available to us, not necessarily saying, yes, we want to do exactly like what they have asked for, but maybe we would like staff to explore what a third path would look like?
Yeah, I, I think there's, there's always that option. One of the complexities is the, the update to the, to the com-plan, the update to the planned action ordinance for Canyon Park. If we were specifically looking at the Canyon Park area or if we were looking citywide. And then we start to unwind that, that, that complicated housing targets. And so we would need to evaluate that, that citywide, and we'd be increasing capacity. You know, if, if we say, let's, let's increase capacity of residential units within this designation. We'd have to analyze that and how it, how it ripples through the com-plan into the, the transportation element, the CFP and, and projects. What, how Public Works would see, how to, how to accommodate that. Are we, are we positioned with the infrastructure existing or within that CFP? How do we rearrange those, those Legos, those project blocks?
I have a quick clarifying question, too, based on what I think the mayor was asking. In this case, what, what's being considered, considering the study session is a docketting request, which is then via our code, a request process to do a comprehensive plan amendment. I think what the mayor is saying is something that would be different than, I want to just clarify, that would be, this would be a council-initiated action of scoping of something that you want to look at, because again, this isn't, the docketting request, I think, is, it's, is it, let me ask it a different way. Is this something that the council needs to consider? Do we pick this one up or not pick it up? Or can the council have council-initiated comprehensive plan amendments at this time as well?
As far as the docket, it's, yeah, pick this up or not pick it up. Decide on, through a resolution, what to do with it. If there's a, a council direction to study, you know, another alternative to opportunities for expansion or, or other development.
I mean, one of the cool things of the, we did when we separated out the land use and the zoning maps is we gave ourselves the flexibility to consider zoning changes without having to do a com-plan update, if I remember that correctly. So like, is there a way that we could take a look at accommodating what they're looking for with a zoning request rather than a com-plan amendment?
And we can do that as long as the zoning change would be consistent with the com-plan. So, and this is, this is that.
Okay.
It, it's, it's the multi-layer of, if we have a, say, for example, a mixed-use zone, mixed-use designation, excuse me, a comprehensive plan designation that's mixed-use, that allows for almost everything. If it, if that underlying zoning doesn't, it says you can do residential, you can do office, but it doesn't say you can do a, a storage facility, but we really want to see that. I'm, I'm being silly.
Yeah, yeah.
But if, if that's the, if that's what, what council said, hey, we, we want to add this, this use into that.
If you wanted to bring me a bill banning new storage units, I would be really excited about that, but I see that you're doing.
That would, that would be the way that we, we would go. We would say, is this consistent with the comprehensive plan? Yes, because the designation allows for this wide variety. If the designation is a little bit more narrow, such as the employment-low, or even the, even the residential zones, they, they, we'd have to make sure that we're, we're clear that we're not changing them to a mixed-use zone. You know, say it's a, trying to think of a, of a good example, that, that would never happen. But it would have to be consistent. So that's, that's, that's checkbox one. Is, is the zoning change consistent with the comprehensive plan designations? And that's where we look at the, those underlying five types, residential, low, residential, medium, mixed-use, the, the, the blues, the employment lows.
And so is that a zoning designation or is that a land use designation?
It's a land use designation, that within it, it has a whole series of types of activities, and the policies support that variety, and that variety changes.
Okay.
But it does create a lot more flexibility. You are right in that we have that, that capacity to do zoning changes without com-plan amendment changes.
But in this case, if the current land use doesn't support residential zoning, we would then have to do a com-plan update.
Correct.
In order to do the zoning request.
Right.
Okay. Is there a way to explore looking at the zoning request and then adopt that at the same time that we do a com-plan amendment later?
The com-plan would have to be done either prior to or simultaneously with.
Yeah, the land use would have to change before the zoning changed.
Yes.
But like, is the, but we could look at zoning first, and we just couldn't adopt it until after that? So like, we wouldn't necessarily have to open a docket item right now to be able to explore what that might look like, but we would have to change obviously the land use designation, and is that still one time per year, Eileen?
Com-plan designation changes, yes. It's once, once per year.
I think Christian answered that, yes, you can only open up your com-plan once a year.
Okay. Is there a path or a way to explore what is being, maybe something adjacent to what is being asked for that would be something that we would like to see in terms of changes to the subarea? Because honestly, I, I don't particularly see the point of having employment-low designations. Like, if somebody wants to build something more intense in the middle of our regional growth center, that seems good to me. So like, I, this to me looks like a problem that we have somebody in our community that has highlighted to us, and I would like to figure out a way to try to address that, because it seems that we're restricting redevelopment at a place where we would like to see redevelopment in our regional growth center. So like, is there a, a path that isn't super, super difficult to be able to do that?
I would mention that, we talked about PSRC before. They are going to be revisiting the center designations for all countywide centers within this next year. And they will be looking at to what degree we have achieved some of the goals that were established when they certified our center designation back in twenty-twenty-one, I believe. So that really could provide us valuable feedback for how they're perceiving and what their policies are regarding regional growth centers. They encourage a mix of uses, which is what the Canyon Park Subarea does as well, particularly along Bothell Everett Highway. So that could really provide the impetus to look at something, given we know that our regional partner is going to be really rigorously looking at how we're meeting that regional growth center criteria this year.
Well, let me ask a question related to that, then. If we, if they go and start that rigorous process of looking at our designation that we very much want to keep, if we can come to the table saying, we are already working on increasing intensity so that we can allow more potential redevelopment, wouldn't that help us?
We would have to really establish and look at how the center is doing. And we had on our work program a revisiting of the Canyon Park Subarea in twenty-twenty-seven.
Yeah.
To assess this at, at that stage. So if the city council wanted to advance that, I mean, that's your prerogative to do that. To make that happen a little earlier than twenty-twenty-seven, we'd have to revisit our, our work program.
Totally. That's a question of what we would be pushing back in order to push that up. And I would be interested in like, just how much time that would take and what we'd have to push back and all of that. Is that something that we could come back at a different meeting? Do we have to make this decision tonight?
Well, I don't know that it's time-bound for this evening. We could look and provide some estimates for what would be involved in advancing the re-review of the Canyon Park Subarea, what the scope of that would be. So I think we could come back with that. I don't believe that action is required immediately. We just have typically asked for a city council's feedback on the docket request.
Yeah.
By this point in the year, given the application came in in October.
I'll just note, I noted your request that it could be helpful to hear from council. We haven't heard from anybody else yet, too. So I think before we start negotiating a two-year work plan change, let's hear from some other voices.
I was just curious what was feasible so that we could have the conversation around what was feasible.
Everything is possible.
May I jump in? Oh, Rami, he's got to stand up.
Thank you for noticing. I see, thank you for this. I, there are a few things that were mentioned. One is the, I didn't know, the PSRC, I missed it in the, in the packet, but that's good to know that they were reviewing the growth centers, I guess, across the region, I'm assuming. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so there's that happening. We have our plan in two years, Canyon Park. We have the plan to have the subarea plan being looked at in a couple of years, which I'm assuming also will take the feedback from PSRC this year. You know, that they, they do this year. I worry that, which was something Christian hit on, which is, I also was thinking about, that was concerning to me, because we did go through all that work and simulating and coming with all those numbers. And here's the, the growth plans for housing and employment and across the different, the city counties and all that stuff. And then we're gonna go and do this small thing that will have a, that will, you know, have a ripple effect across everything else that we're doing, that we've done already. And I just was curious about what the impact of this change would be. If, if we decide to move forward, like, how is that gonna mess things up in the future, if at all, you know?
Yeah, it's hard to say.
That makes sense?
Yeah, it's, it's hard to say what the, what the impact would be. We'd, we'd have to open the, open the books, evaluate what the, the change would, would, would require as far as updates to the com-plan and, and what, what various elements within the com-plan would need to be updated. And then the subsequent Canyon Park Subarea. So it's, it's doable to study it and doable to, to come up with an action or a scope of, of, of work. But we just don't know what the answer would be as far as what the implications would be without kind of getting under the hood and figuring out what the change would result in.
Yeah, I guess I agree with the mayor. We have an opportunity in front of us to do something. Maybe we do something sooner rather than later to evaluate overall view of the city. Because, you know, we have Red Barn, and you have Midtown, and you have Downtown, and you have all those areas that we have to look at and, and, and plan. And I, I wonder, I'm just wondering how impactful, if we make this one change here. Because we're gonna be spending our time, I'm assuming, because if we decide to do this, then there's gonna be other requests in the future. And I, I, we don't want to get into this reactive mode, but let's be more proactive. I guess that's the, the point that I'm trying to make. If, if that makes any sense. I know it's not a question. It was more of a comment. I don't know if you agree or disagree with this.
That's helpful. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think we, we captured your, the, the feedback, and I think it is, I think that is a, a good observation for the council, the rest of your colleagues to reflect on, too, on what, how they'd want to prioritize the action.
May I jump in? I have a few questions as a digress. Is manufacturing allowed in that area right now?
Yes.
That's what I thought. One, it kind of strikes me as an odd spot to just put that specific zoning change in. And I think it's begging for a bigger conversation for the neighboring areas. If it's manufacturing, how, and, and it becomes mixed-use residential and people are there, as that employment center builds up, is there going to be a protest from the public about, we live here, we don't want this manufacturing next door or across the street from us? I'm just thinking about where they're might, trying to troubleshoot here. Now, I think that, and it's a bigger discussion, that where that property is right now, its surrounding properties, would we want to make a change? A larger change for all those properties so that it's not so awkwardly placed? Like I said, I think it's a bigger conversation. I want to really keep our employment numbers up. That's really, really important. I do not want to risk. We've had, like, here in Bothell, downtown Bothell, we had mixed-use, and we lost a lot of retail because there was no demand for retail, so it all became residential. And I would really like to see us hold to our guns on protecting employment opportunities up there at Canyon Park. That said, if it can become a mixed-use and keep our employment numbers up, great, but I think it needs to be a bigger picture for the surrounding properties. And the other, the question that I have, that's my, that's where I land on it. I think there has to be more discussion on it. But the question that I have is that this prop, specific property, the other option is that it can come, that we can, can, if it, if it wants to go residential, have the residential component, it can go quasi-judicial and go down that pathway. It just has to have a project ready to go? Am I understand, was I understanding that they were wanting to have that in place on the off chance that they would want to go residential versus we have a residential project?
No, if, if the, the quasi-judicial zoning amendment would be secondary to the, the land use, the comprehensive plan land use designation.
Okay, so we'd still have to go through that?
Right.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I, I'm leaning the way that, that's with staff's recommendation is that maybe not decline, decline it, decline it for immediate discussion, but put it down in the pipeline for later discussion and look at it more globally for, with its surrounding properties. That's my two bits.
I see that the deputy mayor's hand is still up. Did you have more you wanted to add, Deputy Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Cool, then I will take this opportunity. As I've digested the, you know, information in the presentation, the packet, and the discussions so far, I do want to, I want to add, like, just get some clarification. So I think what I heard you said is that every year between October first and November first, is that correct? People can submit requests for code amendments?
November through October. So right now, we're in.
Oh, so it's not a month, it's eleven months.
November twenty-twenty-four through this October thirty-first is the, the timeframe when we'll accept docket requests.
Okay, and is that, well, the time period is then the same, but, because I remember as we finished up the comprehensive plan, it was noted in several places that, once the comprehensive plan passed, that members of the community, neighbors, owners of property could then come to the city and request changes. And is, like, is that the same time period? Like, there's, there's the just after it passed, and there's like the every year after that?
That, I think that, that, the comments there were regarding the, the private amendment land use designation changes.
Is this different?
No, it's the, it's the same. It's the same.
Okay.
The same process, yes.
Okay, cool. So like, I, I recall during the comprehensive plan process that there were, there were a handful of people who came to us saying, like, at some point, like, like, I don't think that this is properly designated. I'm gonna make a request to change it. So this is the time to do that. Okay.
Yes.
And so this, when did this request come in?
It was October of twenty-twenty-four, October twenty.
Okay, so before we pass the plan, but kind of the writing was on the wall?
Well, it was, it was, well, we were working through the final.
Oh, that was, that was kind of a chaotic time. I remember that. Okay, thank you. You're answering my questions. So my understanding is that the property owner is requesting to switch, to change the designation from employment-low to mixed-use employment. And so like, the goal is. And so like, the goal is to build housing there, but mixed-use employment means that employment opportunities are required to also exist with the housing? Or is it, like, we wouldn't end up with just housing or just employment or a mix of both? We'd have to have a mix of both?
It would depend on, on the project. So, um, you know, a mixed-use project, depending on what the, the, the underlying zoning standards would be, there may be requirements for, you know, for maybe downtown has ground floor retail with residential above for, you know, so much of the, the frontage. It, it can get specific to the sub-area, I guess, is, and that gets into the, the zoning.
And gets into the sub-area plan.
That, the answer there is it depends. So you, you could see all residential, you could see all commercial, you could see a mix. It just allows for that blend.
And Councilmember, I'm thinking back to two-ish years ago when we were having the last round of comprehensive plan amendment requests. And I think there was an important, um, point that ended up being made around that, again, with these applications, it's not about what will happen, it's about what could happen. And so there's sometimes a, a concept attached to it, that's where everything, but again, until the building permits dropped, um, yeah, so, so it's really is around the allowing of what could, could happen, but not necessarily what will happen.
Yeah, and I appreciate you highlighting that because that's kind of the spirit of my question is like, what could happen in a mixed-use employment place? My understanding is that it would be mixed use. There would be employment and housing. And that would be required in the, the MU slash E designation.
I'd have to look into what the, the, the zoning standards would say. The mixed-use designation says, here's, here's the, the variety of, of intensities that we look for. The zoning poli, zoning standards align with those policies, but can be a little bit more specific to say, here's how much of a project must include employment or, or commercial. And here's how much.
Can you go to the map in the presentation that's the current land use map? Okay, that is specific enough. So we are talking about the purplish square to the left of the 405, 527 interchange. It's square-ish.
We're, we're talking, uh, the, the blue area.
We're talking about the blue above.
The blue area just north of it, yes.
Well, I, I want to draw your attention to the purple square. Um, that purple square is currently mixed-use employment, correct?
Correct.
And so, um, do you specifically know what, like, those kind of, uh, technicalities and like nuances are of that purple box? Because it would make sense to me that if you're, have an adjoining property, that the rules for that conversion from, you know, the low employment to mixed-use employment would follow the same rules as the, um, the mixed-use employment just south of it.
It, I'll try to, uh, it does for the comprehensive plan, but I'm gonna go two slides forward and I'm gonna show you the shoreline designation, which is urban conservancy. That is the orange. That does not allow for residential mixed use or anything other than open space. It's a conflict. That is a conflict in the code. But, and, and we thought, we've brought it up to say, well, if that were a park property, parks would probably say, please rezone this. We are not gonna force or redesignate it. We are not gonna go in and say it's privately owned. If they want it redesignedated, that would make a lot of sense, given the urban conservancy shoreline designation and the inability to build anything within that orange. That's all wetland associated with North Creek. A very unique kind of oddity. If, 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 if the question were buildable land in purple, south of that square, the subject property, it would be a different conversation that we'd be having. Cause it would be adjacent to.
Is there any buildable land in that purple box?
Very little.
There's a little high-intensity section. So that's it. Everything else is conservan, is, would be conserv.
Provided that there's no buffer impacts, as those aren't reflected in there. So that's just showing the
And, and we don't know what the environmental impact would of, well, do, do we know what the current environmental impact is of the low-use employment on that ur, urban conservancy area?
No, we'd have to look into that.
But it's allowed to be built at the, the density that it's currently allowed under. But we don't know if there might be some impact on the shoreline there?
That would be evaluated at, with, at the project stage with, with details of where the, where the critical area, where the wetland ends, where the buffer extends to.
And, and that's right there, why I would be, I think it would be prudent to move forward with this as a docketing process because then we would better underst, we would be able to do the work and understand like what the impacts are of changing designation and even what the current use is on the shorelines that are right there. Like, if we don't move it forward to put it on the docket, we won't know. Like, the, the work wouldn't be done, done to know it.
So yeah, your options, the options that, um, are outlined in the staff recommendation, last page of the packet, just as a reminder of, so could, could those be known? It's the, um, council can initiate. They can, um, they can defer to later, to, uh, for later or they can decline, right? So you could, the question, uh, just to nuance your statement on that of it, the only, it isn't the only way to find out. You could also initiate a sub area. So there are other options you could do if that's, if that's a curiosity.
We could do it now or we could do it in two years from now, if we wanna know. Am I understanding that correctly? Or next year?
I'm trying to, trying to think of how to, how to unpack this cause this is, there's, there's so many layers and the procedure can get a little bit hinky. As to the docket request, so the, the code provides, just like the city manager said, you can docket this for future study. And it doesn't mean you're gonna redesignate it, redesignate it in the flume. It just means we're gonna find time in our work plan and we're gonna devote a lot more time to studying what this looks like. The applicant has also proposed a site-specific rezone. As y'all will recall from previous site-specific rezones, that's quasi-judicial. It requires a hearing and that would be its own process and have a lot more granularity to it. Um, but I think what the city manager is also suggesting is that I think a procedural path could potentially be, and I, and I'm just gonna kinda spitball here and we can, we can come back at the next meeting too with something a little more fleshed out of declining this particular docket request, but then initiating maybe a sub-area look earlier than 2027. Christian and Jason, tell me if I'm, like, if that's way off base, if it's, you know, not feasible. But I think that's what, I think that's what I'm hearing from the city manager is there might be a, a way to not go for, to decline this particular docket request, but still sort of look at the, what the council has expressed here tonight as a council-initiated action. Christian, Jason, have I, have I?
Yeah, I think you've captured that. I think that, you know, given that we've, were explicit about our intention to, um, revisit the Canyon Park sub-area plan and the progress that it has or has not made in 2027, there could be an opportunity to advance that to an earlier date. And again, we will have feedback from our regional partner sooner than 2027. So that if, if that's what you're alluding to, um, we could advance that. We would just have to figure out how to find the resources to make, to make that happen.
I guess my, my understanding is that we can honor a request made by, you know, a, a landowner in our community to at least do the work. Because it sounds like there may be complicating factors that will arise that will say, this can't be built here anyway because of environmental reasons. Like, I think there's lots of examples on our map that say we can build something here, but envi, once environmental review is done, it says, sure, it can be zoned that way, but we can't actually build it. And that, that could happen here, like, perhaps.
So whether or not a project pencils out isn't determined until the project application stage. Again, you guys are the, tonight, tonight is, the question is to whether or not to study a future land use map designation change, which is a higher level than the individual zoning. And the zoning would dictate basically what could be built there. So I think your question would, to, you know, what could be built there? I, I, I don't think, if you docket this, you still wouldn't know if something could be built there. And that's just what I want to point out.
Yeah, and that, that was the part I was gonna inject, uh, cause I don't think it's necessarily penciling of, is it feasible financially is part of it. But I think to your question, it's like, is it even environmentally possible? And again, and this process wouldn't answer that question. Just to be clear, again, that doesn't, not good or bad. You wouldn't, you wouldn't walk away at the end of the year knowing whether or not environmentally a redevelopment could happen there either.
Yeah, and that is clear to me. We could make this change and then years later find out that was unnecessary. Or what was intended, the intended use that necessitated that change is not relevant because of these other factors. Like, I guess I just feel like we owe it to our community to try to help people figure out how to make best use of their land. Even if later on we find out that best use is more conservation, maybe. I don't know if I'm making sense, but makes sense to me. And I'm okay with moving forward with it. But I know that we have broad disagreement here, so good luck.
I'm trying to wrap my head around this. So here are my questions. That may or may not be good questions. So the mayor had, had mentioned why decline more intensity within our growth center. And my, I wanna make sure I'm thinking about this right because it's not, it's not the intensity that is questionable, it's the type of intensity. It's that we have said this will be employment low. We're supposed to have a mix of uses in our growth center and we're worried about the balance of that mix if we change this. Am I getting that right?
Yes, yes. The, 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 the goals and the, the intent to build along the corridor near transit, near PCC for landmark purposes. You know, those, those areas.
Appreciate that.
Along 527. And then the areas that are further away would have lower intensity uses, but all of those achieved the goals that were set out in the 2020 plan and then were, were reaffirmed in a way with the comp plan and, and how to, how to hit those, those targets.
Awesome. I thought of a silly example for you, by the way. It's our Italian fast casual zone and we need to have pizzas and calzones. And if this is zoned for calzones and they wanna build a pizza store on there, like, we have to make sure we don't lose out on the amount of pizza stores we're supposed to be zoned for. I'm continuing my pizza metaphors, um, from previous meetings. So, um, I don't love the idea of moving, um, a reevaluation of the sub-area plan earlier for one set of parcels in one request. I agree with Councilmember Alderks that we do owe our, like, people who own property in the city, like, to be heard. But a sub-area plan is a bigger thing that affects more than just that one parcel. It's not, it's not like trying to build slightly higher residential intensity in a residential neighborhood or that kinda thing. Um, and it's also, it's hard for me to say this because, like, we're in a housing crisis. Like, I'm like, oh, more housing, we need that. But at the same time, like, we have these very broad, like, plans, including for the sub-area. Um, Councilmember Curd and Alderks and I were on the planning commission and we did that. And it was a huge process. And I, I, we have so many things that we need your department to be doing that I'm worried about what the loss would be. I'm open to talking about it, but I'm just like, oh, do we need to move it up for this one thing? So I have questions there. And certainly I wouldn't wanna move it up before PSRC does their review that it's been mentioned. I did wonder if a potential change is something that we could run by PSRC? Is there a mechanism for that? Like, we, we, we zoned our growth center according to what we, they needed us to do. Like, if we have this question in front of us, can we be like, hey, we're mulling this over. Do you have any guidance? Like, is that something they would do?
It's possible when they're evaluating the progress that we'll get into a Q and A with them and they will likely ask questions about, for example, other properties in the sub-area and how they are or not meeting job targets and residential targets. Uh, Bus Base North, for example, will get questions about how the TDR program is working and if we're achieving the job targets associated with that parcel and other parcels and Canyon Park. So there will be an opportunity, certainly. I'm just not exactly sure, um, when that will occur. We could pose the question, if we had this con, concept for something that was more of a mixed use, um, land use designation, how would that fare in your evaluation? I, I don't know the answer to that now, but there could be that dialogue later this year.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. I think the other thing is I wouldn't wanna lose the employment capacity. So I, I don't even know if there's a way to say, like, okay, you can do whatever commercial you were gonna do on the bottom few floors and then build housing on the top. Like, I am making this up and I do not design builds, buildings for a living, so allow me that grace. Like, The Sims 3 does not translate to this, but, um, I, it seems, it's really hard to say, like, I'm not sure about doing this because again, we're in a housing crisis. It feels crazy for someone to be like, hey, we might wanna build housing here. But at the same time, it's, we might wanna build housing here if our tenant no longer uses this space. We like our tenant, but hey, we're thinking about the future and it's all so up in the air. And then kind of looking at that one map with the urban conservancy there, it adds a lot of question to this. So I'm, I don't know that I have a firm yes, do it or no, don't do it, but I, I'm not super on board with, I'm not on board at all with risking our regional growth center if that's a concern. Um, and I'm also really concerned with the idea that, that we would lose some of our employment centers cause part of trying to be more of a community where you can live here and work here and not drive, you know, 10 hours a week to commute, is we, we need jobs and housing. So I wouldn't wanna necessarily lose the few parts of the city that we have this commercial zoning. So my answer is, ah, and I don't know if that's helpful.
I will just point out that the, one of the first things that I said is like, I really value having that commercial space and I don't wanna lose any of it. And I don't think that simply moving this from one designation to another is going to keep the, like, I don't think that changing the zoning designation or the land use designation is going to accomplish our goal of making sure we don't lose that commercial. So like, it feels like we need a different solution from staff, opening up the sub-area if we want to allow more mixed use and find a method to preserve, uh, the commercial that we already have.
I think that totally makes sense. I'm just not personally sold on doing that because of this one request, like, moving it up.
I totally understand. I would just say that if something's not working, like, I would like to fix it sooner rather than later. And, and I'm not necessarily saying we need to do this right now. Like, we have other things that I'm looking forward to getting done before we do that. Um, but like, you know, and obviously they are not planning on doing anything right now, but if this is something that we could have a bigger discussion around, um, I, I would like to have that discussion over how we can accomplish all of those goals cause I agree with you. Like, I don't wanna put our regional growth center at risk. I would like more intensity than exists in that lo, low right now. And I would like to figure out a way to do it where we preserve the commercial. And I don't know what the mechanism for that looks like. I would, you know, staff for that.
And, and I'm not surprised that we agree on more than we disagree on.
Yes.
Councilmember Minkie is pointing at me because he wants to go last. That's okay. I have a lot to say though, so get ready. I'll start with, um, I should have written down everything. When I was involved with the development of the sub-area plan, we were told again and again and again that the CCNRs in this area determine what can be built and what can't be built. And that's one of the reasons why we felt hamstrung to keep this employment low. And so I really want to understand the impacts from private development restrictions on, in Canyon Park as a whole before we start jigsaw puzzling, um, areas of, of opportunities that come up. So, um, that to say, I think we need housing, we desperately need housing. Um, and we're hearing from someone who's willing to look into it and, and put resources towards it. But I also think that some of the other elements that we have already on, um, like queued up, like parking reform. like parking reform um is gonna have a hu- uh much broader um impact on on our housing supply. And so I think um for for those reasons, um while it is encouraging to hear that there's um interest among landowners in the in the sub area to um get on board with our vision um and get on board with the early vision of Canyon Park as being a whole neighborhood with a there there that it isn't right now. It has to be done in concert with uh um community transit and the green line. It has to be done in concert with um just the the wider, the wider picture here. Um and not just on a property by property basis. And so if we're getting the information from the PSRC and we already had this lined up in twenty twenty seven, um I'd I'd wanna take a look at it more holistically. And so I think I am not in favor of docketing it for this year. Um but um really maybe bringing it back up to our attention um after the results of PSRC come through, um because that may change some of the dynamic of the neighborhood. And also, um you know, the sense of urgency of addressing um any deficiencies that PSRC comes um forward. Because I think the um designation of the um uh growth center is really a really special thing that we have and we need to maintain. Um I will say that I'm pretty disappointed that there's still among like us, the seven of us, there's still uh like confusion about land use and zoning. And if we don't have it straight, if if we're still getting it confused, the community is getting it confused. And I worry that people look at um the flume and they see um a a underwater area and they see it zoned in their term. Mixed use, that's providing a really different connotation. And we have a a huge uphill communication um effort uh to convey what the flume is and what land use is versus zoning and what can be built and what can't. But we've been touching on that today. Um and I'm really hopeful that um as we continue uh to implement our comprehensive plan, we'll draw from some of the communication um uh as a as an organization. Um that's not just community development, but all uh uh all departments of the city draw from some of the communication toolbox and the the learnings and the debriefs that have been going on to um help clarify some of the the terminology that we use. Because um it's confusing and rightly so, but if we don't understand it, the community doesn't understand it. And so um I really encourage us to like really very clearly define the terminology and the jargon that we use, especially in planning. Um and I don't know if like the colorful maps are helpful in and of themselves, um because they are telling very different stories um than I think what the the community is understanding. So um uh a cautionary tale um of of planning in general and um dependency on jargon. And I'll leave it there. Go ahead.
A quick question. Um is the business associations rules, are those, are they similar to like an HOA for residential? Where those can be in place and override city code on what can be built there and how it's built?
They they're, they'd be independent. So yes, if there's a CCNR and a residential HOA or a business uh CC, business HOA or business association. Yes, they could say, no, building height is fifteen feet regardless of what the city says.
Interesting. Okay, that's something new for me. So thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks for bringing that up. I had no idea. Just some few quick thoughts. I know we're late. It's obviously a regional growth center where we want growth. The applicant is proposing a designation change that they believe fits with our council goals. I think those are good things. Um they are a business, they're a property owner that's supporting other businesses and we wanna support everyone. So those are, those all go kind of towards thinking about this, um considering it. And I also understand why they're looking to do what they're looking to do. It's really tough to be an office owner at this point in time since COVID happened. Um properties are trading for less than they were five, ten years ago. So they're looking to make sure that they're capping their risk and their downside, and they're trying to do it within our framework and our goals. So I I I totally understand why they're coming forward with this. And I think they're approaching it in a way that, you know, they're totally trying to work to appeal to um what we're trying to accomplish. But I also understand that companies come, do come and go from our city. Um tenants are here, they're gone, they get acquired, kind of a lot of people acquired in the Canyon Park area over the years. And the buildings always seem to to fill back in. So that's a, that's a, you know, positive thing. The current designation wasn't put there by chance. We didn't just throw a dart at the board. It was very thoughtful um in how we did that. And then we do have this upcoming evaluation for PRS, PSRC. Um I think it gives us a lot of good information. So I concur with uh council member Curd. I don't think right now is the right time. I'd like to get that information from PSRC and then consider uh if we wanna make changes to it.
Is there a I don't know how how far into our twenty twenty six work plan we are right now in terms of what we have going on. But when did you say that we're gonna hear back from PSRC?
It's a bit of a guess, but when I recently heard them present um at a webinar, they mentioned that it would be later this year, that they're in the process right now of certifying everybody's comprehensive plan. For example, they haven't yet certified our comprehensive plan. They're scheduled to do that at the end of this month. Once they get through, everybody's in this first cycle, it would be later in twenty twenty five, I'm assuming maybe early fall.
Okay, so by the end of this year, we should have that information. So if we wanted to look at this in twenty six, that could be an option, um instead of waiting all the way until twenty seven?
Yeah, if if uh there was an option, there is always an option to defer to the next uh year. And we would have more information from PSRC. I'm sure we'll be having much more of a robust back and forth with them.
The um what was I gonna say? Council member Manki and council member Curd both made a point about kind of just doing this for one applicant. Like, I clearly it's one applicant that's asking for it right now, but to me, it's a symptom of a larger problem where if, for whatever reason, they lose a tenant, they feel that there aren't options for them under the current zoning and other than just filling it back up. So like, that is something that that I would like to fix in that sub area wide. And um if we could, if we could do that sooner rather, sooner than twenty twenty seven, I I would like to do that, cuz to me, that's that's a problem that's keeping us from our goals.
And um I'll just note too that the council's on the eve of having a economic vitality plan come forward to you for consideration for adoption and some of the outreach and the uh data that we've collected too is on vacancy rates. So that'll be communicated to you. I will say that um the picture is 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 positive at this point though too, in terms of we don't have. There hasn't been an issue of those spaces filling predominantly. And that doesn't mean that that will be true five years from now, ten years from now. But the economic vitality plan will be another piece of data that will help inform um how you look at this going forward.
Do you need anything else from us?
I don't think so. I think, so the next step as identified is coming forward, again, this is a formal process that that um the city goes through most years. Uh depending on applications, I loved the clarification of the of the timeline, cuz it is, it is confusing. It's one of those things where it's, it's always open. It just depends on when you're looking at it. So that was a really good, that was a good clarification. But in this case, uh I think we we got um plenty of feedback. I think there's some options that are bringing back um a resolution for this process. And then also, I think as we do that, we'll um communicate back some of the things that we heard and commitments of. Uh interest in um for sure, the sub area plan review in twenty twenty seven. Didn't hear anyone say we shouldn't do that. The question will be is whether or not we do it sooner. So um we'll uh we'll put our heads together and bring back that legislation.
In that case, we're adjourned.